Welcome, everybody. Welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting for May 6, 2025. And before we begin, I want to say a few words about attending our meeting and participating in our public comment. Individuals are not allowed to disrupt the meeting at any time. This includes talking out of turn or without permission, interrupting or making sounds when someone else is talking or approaching council members or city employees who are staffing the meeting. If a person disrupts this meeting, I will give a warning and the person's remaining comment time and/or ask the person to leave the meeting room for the rest of the meeting. My hope is that we can have a civil discourse here in our public comments, that we don't use name-calling, that we don't say lies about somebody to malign their character, because that's not a First Amendment right, a freedom of speech right. So I know that we can have a good meeting here today, and I look forward to beginning. So, City Clerk, can you do the roll call, please?
Thank you, Mayor Robinson.
Here.
Thank you, Mayor Malakutian.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen-House.
Yep.
And Councilmember Suma Dewaria.
And Councilmember Bargava will be joining us shortly.
Councilmember Hamilton, could you please lead us in the flag salute?
Sure. Please rise if you're able. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, as I said a few weeks ago, it's very unusual that a council gets to choose
their own colleague, but we had an opportunity to choose a new colleague when Councilmember Stokes retired after 14 years of service. And I am very excited for the swearing-in of our newly-appointed Councilmember Vishal Bargava. And so, City Clerk, are you going to do the job? Okay.
Hi, Vishal Bargava.
Having been duly appointed to the office of City of Bellevue, Council Position Number One.
Having been duly appointed to the office of City of Bellevue, Position Number One.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of this office.
I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of this office.
As prescribed by law and to the best of my ability.
As prescribed by law and to the best of my ability.
And that I will support and maintain the constitutions of the State of Washington and of the United States of America.
And that I will support and maintain the constitution of the State of Washington and that of the United States of America.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome, Councilmember Bargava.
Thank you.
And we'll do pictures after, I guess, some of our proclamations tonight. We have four proclamations to do tonight. The first one is Jewish Heritage Month, read by Councilmember Nguyen-House and accepted by Regina Friedland from the American Jewish Committee. She's the Regional Director. Then we'll have Affordable Housing Week, read by Councilmember Bargava, and that will be accepted from people from the Housing Development Consortium, Patience Malaba and Brady Nordson, Sahar Amini from Habitat for Humanity, and Guillermo Rivera from East Side for All. And then we will do the National Police Week proclamation, which will be read by Councilmember Lee, and that will be accepted by Assistance Chief, Constance Slappy. And finally, we will have Public Service Recognition Week proclamation, read by Councilmember Suma Dewaria and accepted by our City Manager, Diane Carlson. So let's start with Councilmember Nguyen-House.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this is the Jewish American Heritage Month proclamation. So whereas Jewish American Heritage Month is an opportunity to honor the rich history, culture, and contributions of Jewish Americans to our nation, our state, and our community; and whereas for generations Jewish Americans have shaped the cultural, economic, scientific, and civic life of the United States, including right here in Bellevue, through leadership in education, business, and the arts, public service, social justice, and much more; and whereas Jewish Americans have overcome centuries of discrimination, antisemitism, and violence with resilience and perseverance, continuing to fight for equality, religious freedom, and human dignity for all; and whereas the City of Bellevue stands in solidarity with the Jewish community in condemning antisemitism and all forms of hate, remaining committed to building a safe, inclusive, and welcoming city for people of all backgrounds; and whereas Bellevue is enriched by its diverse faith and cultural communities, including a vibrant Jewish institutions, congregations, and families who help foster interfaith understanding and civic engagement; and whereas during Jewish American Heritage Month, we celebrate the enduring contributions of Jewish Americans to the fabric of our community and recommit ourselves to upholding the values of inclusion, of justice, and mutual respect. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of Bellevue, Washington, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Jewish American Heritage Month in Bellevue and encourage all residents to honor the history and ongoing contributions of Jewish Americans to our city and to our nation. Thank you.
Thank you. Regina Friedland, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Robinson, Councilmembers, and Bellevue residents. Thank you for this proclamation. It's an honor to accept it on behalf of the Jewish community and American Jewish Committee. Especially during Jewish American Heritage Month, this has a lot of meaning. Established Jewish life on the East Side dates back over 60 years. In 1961, Bellevue welcomes its first synagogue, Temple Sinai. A few years later, Temple Benetora was founded, and local families became the anchor of Jewish life in the city. By 1980, Bellevue was the home to the Jewish Day School of Metropolitan Seattle, a sign that Jewish families saw a future here, followed by Temple de Hurst Sinai's east-side location, and East Side Torah Center, and some smaller congregations that are continuing to grow here. From volunteering in schools and social service programs to participating in city commissions and public life, Jewish residents have long been a part of Bellevue's growth and vibrancy. They are business owners, teachers, doctors, artists, public servants, committed to building a strong and inclusive Bellevue. Through AJC, the American Jewish Committee, I've been honored to work collaboratively with Councilmember Nguyen-House and Linda White to advance those values. In 2002, Bellevue became the first city in the Pacific Northwest and the second city on the West Coast to adopt the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance, IHRA's Working Definition of Antisemitism, sending a powerful message that hate has no place here. That commitment means everything to our community, not just because it protects us, but because it reaffirms Bellevue's dedication that all people are welcome here. Jewish American Heritage Month is a time to honor that legacy, to celebrate the values we've carried with us of faith, perseverance, justice, and the ways those values have helped shape this city and the country. On behalf of this community, thank you for recognizing our story as part of the Bellevue story. May this month be an invitation to learn from one another, to stand together, and to continue building a city where everyone belongs. Thank you.
Thank you. We will do a picture when we're done with all the proclamations, so if you can have a seat and stay with us, we'll call you back up. Thank you. Councilmember Bargava. Next up, we have our Affordable Housing Week proclamation, read by Councilmember Bargava.
Okay. Here's the proclamation for the Affordable Housing Week. Whereas access to safe, healthy, and affordable housing is a fundamental human right and a cornerstone of vibrant, equitable communities; and whereas the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development defines affordable housing as housing for which the occupant is paying no more than 30% of their gross income for housing costs, including utilities; and whereas the Washington State Department of Commerce projects that by 2044, King County will need nearly 200,000 net new housing units for households at or below 80% of the area median income, highlighting the urgent need for affordable housing solutions; and whereas the City of Bellevue is actively addressing this need through initiatives such as ongoing affordable housing strategy update and reflecting changing market conditions, which will reflect, sorry, changing market conditions and support the development and preservation of additional affordable housing units; and whereas further city efforts to increase the supply of affordable housing include making city-owned land available for affordable housing development, investing in affordable housing and supportive services, and expanding housing opportunities in transit-oriented districts; and whereas Affordable Housing Week, May 12 to 16, 2025, is a time for communities across King County to come together to raise awareness, advocate for policy solutions, and celebrate efforts to ensure that everyone has access to affordable housing. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Mayor Lynn Robinson, do hereby proclaim May 12 through 16, 2025, as Affordable Housing Week in Bellevue and encourage all residents to recognize the importance of affordable housing in building a strong, inclusive community and to support efforts to increase access to safe, healthy, and affordable homes for all.
Thank you. So we have Patience and Brady, Sahar and Guillermo. Would you like to come up, please? Welcome.
I will kick us off. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmembers, and thank you, city staff. And thank you, Councilmember Bargava, for proclaiming Affordable Housing Week. I also want to take this opportunity to congratulate the City of Bellevue on the Frank Chop Award that we gave to the city, because we fundamentally believe that all of you as elected leaders, the planning commission, the city staff, you are working towards a clear shared purpose on housing. We've made progress on the comprehensive plan significantly. We're making progress on zoning updates for middle housing and mixed-use development, and we've got great progress underway on Wilbertan, and we're counting on your leadership to get that work to the finish line, prioritizing affordable housing in all of that work. I will close with this. The City of Bellevue is proving what's possible when courage, strategy, and a heart for public service come together, and we're grateful for your leadership and partnership. And with that, I will turn over to an HDC member who's going to speak on behalf of all of us.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Malakutian, Councilmembers, city staff. My name is Sahar Amini. I'm the Advocacy and Policy Manager at Habitat for Humanity, and I'm honored to be here tonight representing all of us as members of the Housing Development Consortium. It is a privilege to stand with you as we accept this proclamation, recognizing the Affordable Housing Week. This proclamation affirms that housing is the foundation of a thriving community and reflects Bellevue's commitment to addressing the affordable housing crisis. It underscores that safe, stable, and affordable housing is not a luxury but a necessity. Housing supports strong schools, healthy families, resilient neighborhoods, and a vibrant local economy. It allows people of all backgrounds and income levels to live, work, and contribute to the Bellevue community. Bellevue has long been recognized as a city that values innovation, inclusion, and opportunity. As the city grows and changes, you are leading and showing what it means to embrace effective housing solutions that reflect our shared values. That kind of leadership requires collaboration across sectors, the courage to think creatively, and a deep commitment to ensuring that livability and affordability are not competing priorities but complementary goals. On behalf of HDC and our more than 200-member organizations, nonprofits, affordable housing developers, service providers, and advocates, thank you. Thank you for your leadership, for issuing this proclamation, and for your continued dedication to making housing a priority in Bellevue's future. We look forward to working alongside you to turn these shared commitments into lasting change, so that every individual and family who wants to call Bellevue home has the opportunity to do so now and in the years ahead. I also want to take a moment to congratulate Councilmember Bargava, whose commitment to housing, livability, has been proven during his years on the planning commission, and we look forward to partnering with you on the council as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll do a picture at the end. Thank you. Okay, then we have Councilmember Lee reading the National Police Week proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas President John F. Kennedy signed the proclamation in 1962, designated in May 15 and the week in which it falls as National Police Week, recognizing the service and sacrifice of law enforcement officers across the nation. And whereas since the first recorded death of an officer in the line of duty in 1786, more than 24,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice in the course of their work. And whereas, this includes Officer Jordan Jackson and Detective Thomas Ray, two members of the Bellevue Police Department, whose lives were tragically lost in the line of duty. And whereas the names of Jackson, Ray, and other dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, D.C. And whereas law enforcement officers courageously stand as the guardians of peace, ensuring the safety and security of community members, businesses, and neighborhoods across the country. And whereas with successful events like National Night Out, Family Fourth, the Summer Youth Camp, Community Academy, and Hallowing on the Hill, the commitment of our police officers extends beyond law enforcement, encompassing community engagement, education, and partnerships that strengthen the fabric of our city. And whereas it is important that all community members recognize and honor the sacrifices and contributions of law enforcement officers and express their appreciation for the critical role they play in preserving the rights and freedoms we enjoy. Now therefore, I, Congresswoman Lee, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of City Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim May 11 through 17, 2025, as National Police Week in Bellevue, and encourage all residents to honor the service and sacrifice of law enforcement officers, past and present, and to recognize their role in ensuring a safer, more resilient community.
Thank you, Councilmember. And we have Assistant Chief Slappy here. Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson and the Bellevue City Council. National Police Week has become an annual tradition where the law enforcement community recognizes and honors the great sacrifices police officers make to keep their communities and cities safe. This line of public service is a career of passion, and when you describe us as being the guardians of our communities, that is who we are 24 hours a day and seven days a week. As someone who has had the privilege of working in this profession for nearly 29 years, I hope you can take to heart when I say that the trust and support Bellevue gives to its police department is truly a gold standard. Because of the strong partnership the department and the Bellevue City Council have, we have the resources we need to keep Bellevue a safe place to live, work, and visit. The council has also been with us during some moments of great loss. Words cannot express how valuable your support has meant during those trying times. So it is with great privilege, on behalf of the Bellevue Police Department, that I accept this proclamation from Mayor Robinson and the Bellevue City Council. We truly thank you.
Thank you. We'll do a picture after. We have one more proclamation. Public Service Recognition Week, read by Councilmember Suma Dewaria.
Whereas Public Service Recognition Week is observed during the first full week of May to honor the people who serve our nation as federal, state, county, and local government employees; and whereas public servants contribute to the growth, safety, and quality of life in our communities through their commitment to excellence, innovation, and service in a wide variety of professions and departments; and whereas the City of Bellevue is proud to serve by a dedicated and diverse workforce of public employees who uphold the city's values and exceptional service, stewardship, and accountability; and whereas public service professionals in Bellevue, including those in planning, engineering, police, fire, parks, finance, technology, human services, and more, play a vital role in supporting the city's continued growth, equity, resilience, and sustainability. And whereas the work of public servants has never been more critical, as they continue to adapt, lead, and respond to the needs of a dynamic and diverse community, all while maintaining the highest standards of professionalism; and whereas it's important to recognize and show appreciation for the work, dedication, and integrity of those who chose public service as a career and who help ensure that government is responsive, effective, and accessible to all. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of Bellevue, Washington, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim May 5 to 11, 2025, as Public Service Recognition Week in Bellevue, and encourage all residents to recognize and thank our public employees for their outstanding contributions to our community.
Thank you, Councilmember. City Manager Carlson, did you want to respond?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. This is very important to recognize our city employees for the work that they do. They're out there every day providing excellent service to our community, and they do it quietly. They do it purposefully. They do it with pride. And their public service is really the backbone of what we strive to provide to our community and connect the neighborhoods. Maintaining our infrastructure are some of the things that they do, and supporting families in need. So from smart planning for growth, which you acknowledged, and responding to emergencies, our employees do make a real difference in the community every day. Public service touches every part of the community, and it reflects our values and your values as well for the city. This proclamation every year is something that honors those employees providing that service and affirms the values, and that means a great deal to both our city employees and others who are providing public service to our community. So thank you very much for taking the time to do it. We recognize that, and we appreciate it. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Well, let's start with Regina, and we'll do that picture first. Well, let's start with Regina, and we'll do that picture first. So before we approve the agenda, we're going to make a little amendment. Deputy Mayor?
I move to approve the agenda amended to remove item 8E, which is Resolution Number 10505.
From the consent calendar? You're removing it from the consent calendar?
Yeah.
Yeah. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, City Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for oral communications?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There are eight pre-registered speakers on the list tonight. So before I start calling the list of names, I'll go over a few of the rules that the council has in place. So the total time for oral communications is for a period of no more than 30 minutes, and all topics must relate to City of Bellevue government. People speaking to items on tonight's agenda will be called first, and then if time remains, people speaking to items not on tonight's agenda will be called. The Presiding Officer is authorized to give preference to those who have not spoken to council within the last 60 days or who will be speaking to topics that will be coming in front of the council within the next 60 days. Each speaker is allowed up to three minutes to speak, and only three speakers are allowed to speak to any one side of a particular topic. Additionally, I want to note that in compliance with Washington State Campaign laws regarding the use of public facilities during elections, no speaker may support or oppose a ballot measure or may support or oppose a candidate for election, which includes one's own campaign. People speaking to these topics or discussing these topics will be asked to stop. And with that, I, Mayor, do you want to?
So I'm going to add that we are with the, some of the land use codes, there's a lot of intricacies to it. And so rather than just speak for or against, if you can tease out something specific, you'll have the ability for more people to speak to the different components. Okay, so we can only have three speak for, three speak against a certain component if you tease it out and identify what you're speaking to, so.
Thank you. As the Mayor was alluding to, there are six separate speakers signed up around middle housing. So with that, I'll call our first speaker. It's Loretta Lopez.
Councilmembers, my name is Loretta Lopez, and I'm speaking on middle housing. The City of Bellevue, for decades, has done a lot of planning with respect to density. So we have the Bellred Spring District, Victoria, downtown, and now Wilberton. The city has spent millions of dollars on affordable housing, and as we just heard about the success of Bellevue's planning with respect to affordable housing. And now we get to middle housing. And middle housing, as you know, is to be distinguished from affordable housing. The state passed HB 110 and other legislation, which requires all cities to allow by right four units plus two in every residential zone. Many people in the city are not aware that this, then, is a possibility next door. There are all kinds of reasons that people are not aware. We're not going to be able to address that now. Given that, my view on this is that the city should adopt the state legislation as the state has set forth and not exceed or add any further intricacies to the state law. The state law alone requires massive change to what we have known, and implementing it will be very difficult. There are many intricacies. I watched the Planning Commission go through the study sessions and review, and in my opinion, the Planning Commission was overloaded. It's a very difficult law. For example, and there are many unintended consequences, as is the case with any complicated legislation. For example, would you know that open space is a driveway? Or a series of driveways? No, but that is how the recommendation will come to you from the Planning Commission, because that's what the staff recommended. There are many, many other intricacies. So, once again, my advice is that adopt the state, what the state has required. We assess in a few years and determine what next steps. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is Chris Lenowski.
Hi, Chris Lenowski. Thanks for hearing me. Same, same subject, same position. I just wanted to, and I emailed you all this morning with my summary of what happened last night at a Bellevue Community Meeting held by Bellevue Community, Bridle Trails Community Club, which I've seen many of you at our events before, the Bridle Trail Night Out, which I'm on the committee of. Thank you all for participating. But the meeting last night showed just how uninformed I think a lot of the public is about these potential changes. Diane and a few other staff members were there, and they did a great job of keeping the meeting, which sometimes got a little ruckus, which is hard for me to even say about a bunch of Bridle Trail folks, but they got excited. And the gist of it is, what is being proposed by the city, which goes beyond what Loretta is suggesting, can result in dramatic changes to our communities, to areas that we've lived in for decades, that we have supported, that we've used to raise children, that has been fundamental to the success that the city now enjoys. So to take residences that have been there for 60 years, 70 years, and to propose three units, four units, five units, six units, all with non-occupant owners in them going in next door with the resulted low parking allowances, the difficulty with ingress and egress on private roads, the increased height restrictions, the lowered setback proposals, you're talking about a major shift in Bellevue. You know, Bellevue's done a great job over the years of growing at a fairly consistent pace. But now we have had to absorb, and we're still absorbing, the changes with the light rail, which really hasn't even come into play. The Spring District, massive changes. The whole Bellred Corridor, massive changes. You've basically allowed a new city to be formed in the middle of this city. And now you're proposing even more changes in our residential area. And to a person, nobody at this meeting, and there were at least 50 residents, agreed with some of the plans. So please just reach out and listen to the public.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tim Hay.
So that's two in support of House Bill 1110 as written.
My name is Tim Hay. Some of you have heard this before. It's the Planning Commission. The reason I'm discussing this is that I want you to, when the time comes, to make changes, to add more density, to add more things to the existing suggestions from the staff. I want you to think about this. This is the best effort to scale look at a typical Bellevue single-family street. One with just six units, just six, replacing retired homes, retired, torn down, and to cross the street from one another. I've shown the 60-foot right-of-way, the roughly, right-of-way out there anyway. Right-of-way, oh, single-family. Here's the right-of-way, pardon me. I got lost. The five feet of grass, grasser plantings, the six-foot sidewalk, two-foot, six-inch curb and gutter, leaving about 33 feet for the asphalt street, which due to the apparent efforts to restrict the use of the car, the car shown is seven-foot-six wide, think trucks, which go up, and buses, which go up to eight-foot-six, will infest the streets in front of all the properties on any street. It's garbage day, and the six plexes will each generate 18 garbage cans. Those are those small little boxes there. 18 garbage cans. But they can be accessed by the garbage truck only if the cars make room for them. Do you think they will? I don't. Dumpsters won't work as the three-foot to five-foot yard, side yard setbacks won't take them. Alley's would work, except that, well, we don't have alley's, do we? Now imagine if this were one of our many cul-de-sacs. Thank you. Please remember this.
The next speaker on our list is Paul Rude.
Thank you, Council. Vehicle noise is out of control. Between 2016 and 2020, I dialogued with Bellevue Police, State Patrol, County Sheriff, Department of Ecology, and our state representatives, Vandana Slater, Amy Whalen, and Patty Cruder about vehicle noise enforcement. Everyone thinks someone else has the answer in puns. No one knows what to do. This email from DOE and Vandana Slater's office shows that the state has punted noise enforcement to local governments. For consistency, noise regulation and enforcement should be at a state-level function. Indeed, there are vehicle noise standards in WAC 1736230. These regulations go back to 1974, and I would describe them as a project that was never completed, modified, cannibalized, and left abandoned. However, I feel there is enough substance remaining that we could easily get the flagrant noise violators to quiet their exhaust systems. To enforce noise regulations, you need a testing official, test instrument, and a test procedure to obtain a valid and defensible result. The regulation's never intended for frontline police officers to judge noise, rather only to direct suspects to a trained testing official. The original rigorous test procedure for vehicles was deleted. However, a general test procedure remains on the books in WAC 1735880. This is a stationary test done outdoors and closely aligns with Table 2 of the WAC Noise Limits. It's two pages. It will produce a reading on the low side. However, I feel this will be enough to identify the flagrant violators. Longer term, if necessary, a more rigorous test procedure could be reestablished. This may involve, require involvement of a qualified scientist or engineer. Likewise, we are free to make stricter local regulations appropriate for a dense urban setting. Presently, no one checks new vehicle or in-use noise standards. Auto manufacturers and mechanics brag about how loud their cars are. Any law that is never enforced will be flouted by a certain segment of the population and by opportunistic businesses. The noise that we are hearing daily and nightly has nothing to do with transportation. Let's call it what it is. It's unnecessary malicious noise disturbance. It's assault and battery with noise as a weapon. Let's make Bellevue a more livable, pleasant community.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Rude, your time is expired.
City Manager, you told me something before the meeting today that I think the community would be interested in knowing.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have had a couple of, many complaints about the noise recently. And so the Police Department already had planned an emphasis on both speeding and noise, and they are undertaking that in May, and have put out some information to the community, and will continue to do that. So, yes, we should see some emphasis in the enforcement in those areas.
Great, thank you.
The next speaker on the list is Anne Rittenhouse.
Hello. The comprehensive plan, the Grand Connection, middle housing, and Wilberton Lucas, affordable housing initiatives, the Spring District development, NEPs for subareas. Wow, the city is really doing a lot. Too much, too quickly, especially as it relates to housing. This is a horrendous amount of stress the city is putting on residents and themselves. As Diane Carlson said last night at the Bridle Trails Meeting, all these housing issues are, quote, "a pretty heavy load", and it is a tremendous amount of information the community has to take in, end quote. When folks are under stress, processes are rushed, and something gets missed. I think the staff has rushed the middle housing Luca, trying to get it done by the deadline, and I think they have failed to fairly and adequately illustrate the negative consequences of this needlessly aggressive Luca. I attended the Planning Commission hearing as well and watched as some commissioners seemed to struggle to understand the concept of all the different scenarios and how complicated issues such as FAR, floor area ratio, applies to the nine different housing types. The staff have presented a flawed Luca to the commission, and they will be presenting a flawed Luca to you. They are comparing their draft Luca to the state model code instead of to the state minimum requirements. The model code is worse than the minimum the state is requiring, so it looks like their changes are minor or even better than what the state is mandating, when in fact, in fact, their changes are much worse than the minimum. Both bills say comprehensive plans must include a housing element that ensures the vitality and character of residential neighborhoods. In order to ensure the vitality and character of neighborhoods, the housing bills do allow cities and counties to apply the same applicable development regulations and permitting requirements to the new housing as they would to the applicable, those that would be applied to the principal unit. Instead of providing the same restrictions to new construction, the staff are substantially eliminating allowable protections. I think the staff have failed to do due diligence with community outreach and education, and that failure was very obvious at the meeting last night because residents are just now finding out about this, and they are mad, as well they should be. The Luca as proposed will be a great failure by the city to protect residents. It will also be a great failure by the city to engage, listen to, and respect their voters. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next, our next speaker is?
So that's, sorry, Charmaine, that's three in favor of HB 110 as written by the state with the minimum standards. So.
We do have one additional speaker on middle housing, and that's Edmund Rittenhouse. But as the Mayor said, we've had three in support of House Bill 1110 as written.
I want to talk about communication and community inputs.
Perfect.
Thank you. Dear council members, within the last several years, I, along with many others, have been invited by Bellevue to participate in several development opportunities. The 20-year Bellevue Comprehensive Plan had several phases to inform and gather community inputs for the plan. These opportunities were invaluable to help the city produce a 20-year plan. I also got to participate with the city in the development of our Great Neighborhoods Plan. We had several meetings. Staff even walked the neighborhood with us. It was wonderful. These types of community involvement opportunities certainly helped to keep the Bellevue government close to its communities and the people that they represent. After such wonderful communications with the city, I am amazed at the atrocious level of community communication that Bellevue has had pertaining to the middle housing Luca. Since a Luca would have potential negative ramifications to Bellevue communities, it certainly should have been developed with community involvement. Last night, I participated in the Bridle Trails Community Club meeting, and several Bellevue staff were there to help answer questions about the proposed Luca. Bully for them! But then, as the Q&amp;A went on, more and more of the Bridle Trails audience became upset with what the Luca was doing and how it could affect their community. They were surprised at what was happening. They were also pretty upset to find out that, 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 blah, 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 that the planning commission had already approved the Luca. I'm surprised the middle housing Luca was developed secretly without community involvement, considering the impact it could have for Bellevue communities. It appears that Bellevue staff worked with developers to add extra provisions that make middle housing development easier, such as reduced building property setbacks, increased building height, and no off-street parking requirements, all of which are not good for the communities they could be built in. Please don't approve the Luca as written. Develop the Luca in a joint-community-Bellevue-government type of atmosphere such that you don't get stuck with an unacceptable Luca as it currently sits. Thank you.
So just to clarify, nothing's been approved. The planning commission only makes recommendations.
Thank you. The next speaker on our list is Jill Kunsler, who is joining us virtually. Mr. Kunsler, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Your time begins now.
Why, thank you. I want to thank you for your proclamation on Jewish-American muff, especially as the golden age of the Churchill presidency over Redmond is shining very brightly this Saturday. Most appropriately, on Jewish-American muff, with the Super Duke President about to open the Redmond Link Line and celebrate what will be Soundtrance's crowning achievement this year, bringing light rail to Redmond to go to connect the second-best city on the east side in Bellevue, no offense, and hopefully one day, sexy white rail will connect from there to Mercer Island to the airport. I bring this up out of sheer joy, because I'm getting really sick and tired of dealing with and talking about a certain Alex and his anti-Semitic Nazi salutes, name-calling, Nazism, sexism, racism, the list goes on of awfulness. Alex Zimmerman is a spawn of Satan, and I can go on, but I love, too depressing. Saturday's going to be a great day. We're going to celebrate, you know, allowing people to get around more easily, and Jews have made so many contributions in the sciences and culture and such that I really appreciate the resolution, and thank you for placing it forward. And finally, Alex Zimmerman can go to hell. Thank you. Meeting now.
Thank you. Our final list, our final speaker on our pre-registered list is Alex Zimmerman.
Hello. My name is Alex Zimmerman. I live in Bellevue almost for 40 years. I come from Germany, I born in Germany. I'm a Jew. What does I have about Bellevue government is exactly what I want to explain to you now. First time I spoke in council chamber in 1996 with my class action, what is a brink? Nobody from Bellevue Council supports this class action. I win this class action behalf of 500 families, yeah. So what is this happening Bellevue with me, for example? I don't know about other people, but probably everything is similar. For 30 years, I make a hundred complaint, hundred complaint for 30 years in Bellevue government, and I never have one positive word for 30 years. It's a little bit confused me. I spoke publicly 5,000 times from Tacoma to Everett. I have 6,000 trespasses from King County, 90 trespasses from Bellevue now, today, first day of my right for speak here. And Bellevue prosecute me five times, all time fake, three times before I win, right now I will win another two times. It's not a question of Bellevue. What is I want talking right now? This make me absolutely sick in this exactly what is I want. It's not only sick, it's an abuse of government, what is we have right now. I talk about state of the city, what is weeks ago, you know what it means. Mayor Robinson did this in Bellevue...
Mayor, excuse me, a point of order, please.
Yeah.
Time, stop time.
Excuse me, I, I think that as you were warned at the beginning, as everyone is warned, as a candidate for office and running against the mayor, I think it's completely inappropriate for you to have your sign here and for you to come in and criticize the mayor. Running against the mayor, you have elected to disqualify yourself from criticizing the mayor, and I just ask that Alex Zimmerman be reminded of the rules and that he follow all of the same rules as anyone else, and that he either follow them or be asked to leave.
Okay, I don't follow your rules, so how I can talk about state of...
That's a warning.
Yeah, thank you very much. How I can state about state of the city, what is government make in Bellevue downtown association for approximately 50, 60 people? In my experience here, and I speak many times before around, state of the city or state of King County supposedly go to the people, but you did something what is only talking to aristocrat. By definition, it's a pure violation. By definition, it's a crime. I don't care about Robinson. I care about philosophy, what is you council have for many years, is a fundamental principle, what is you have. Is this exactly what is making me totally sick right now? And I support Donald Trump and I'm a MAGA member, you know what it means. So situation right now very simple. Viva Trump, viva new American revolution, and I will speak about everything what is you want, because I speak legally.
Mr. Zimmerman, that is the end of yours, that is the end of your time. There are no remaining speakers on our pre-registered list, though we do have one slot left available. If there is anyone in council chambers who would like to speak to the council, please raise your hand. That goes for those online, please raise your hand. Mayor, I do not see any additional hands. I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you. So next up, we have a motion, actually, excuse me. We have two council members who will be absent at our next meeting, and so we have a motion to excuse our absences.
I move to excuse Councilmember Noonhouse, Councilmember Suma de Varias' absence from the May 13, 2025 regular council meeting.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next up, we have approval of the consent calendar.
I move to approve the amended consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So we have three study session items, and how long do you think this first one's going to take? Do you anticipate?
Mayor, I believe this is approximately 15 to 20 minutes.
Okay. Can we take a break after this? Is everybody okay with that?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor, it's longer than that. Apologies.
Okay, let's take a break. We'll come back at, we'll do a quick break. We'll come back at 10 after. Mayor, would you like to introduce our topic and our speaker?
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and council members. This first study session is a, an open government training. It's required by the state, so it's mandated for the council to receive this training every four years. I'm very pleased to welcome Jessica Skelton. She's a partner at Pacifica Law Group. She's joining us tonight to review the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, Public Records Act, and record retention laws.
So I just realized that we have to have the training. We really can't start till Councilmember Noonhouse is sitting with us, right? Otherwise, he won't have the training.
You can certainly start, I believe, at that moment here.
Okay, okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Sure.
I'll talk about myself officially. So, good evening. Thank you for having me here. As the clerk mentioned, my name is Jessica Skelton. I'm a attorney who practices primarily in the area of municipal law and litigation. I've been here before this council quite a few times before giving this training. I see some familiar faces, but I know several of you are new. As was mentioned, this is a training that you need to receive either 90 days within assuming office or every four years, so that covers, I think, everybody who's here. So I'm going to start with the first open government law that we're going to talk about tonight, which is the Open Public Meetings Act.
Mr. Zimmerman, please don't disrupt the meeting. That's a warning for you. It's hard to hear.
The Open Public Meetings Act, or the OPMA, applies to all Washington public agencies and their subdivisions, and was adopted to ensure that their actions be taken openly and that their deliberations be conducted openly. As I mentioned, part of the statute requires that you receive training, and that is why we are here, to comply with that requirement and to educate you about the Open Public Meetings Act. The basic provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act are pretty straightforward. All meetings of governing bodies have to be open to the public, except for authorized executive sessions. A governing body is defined as the multi-member board, commission, committee, council, or other policy or rule-making body of a public agency, or any committee thereof, when the committee acts, on behalf of the governing body conducts hearings, or takes testimony or public comment. So it would certainly apply to the city council. And a meeting under the Open Public Meetings Act occurs when a quorum of the members of the council come together. A quorum is a majority of the council, so in your case, four members constitutes a So I mentioned that a meeting occurs when a quorum comes together and takes action. So action is an important concept under the Open Public Meetings Act for you to understand. A lot of people have the misconception that action is only the vote that you take at the end of your deliberations, but as you'll see here, there's two separate definitions under the Open Public Meetings Act. We have action, and we have final action. So action's actually defined quite broadly as including the transaction of official business, including but not limited to receipt of public testimony, deliberations, and that can be quite broad, discussions, considerations, reviews, evaluations, and final actions. Final action, of course, means a collective positive or negative decision on an actual vote by a quorum of the governing body upon a motion, proposal, resolution, order, or ordinance. So the important thing to remember here is it's not just that vote that has to happen in an open public meeting, but everything that leads up to the vote, the deliberations, the discussions. So I'm sure you're all familiar with the concept of quorum, and that for you, that means four members of your council. I think it's important, under the Open Public Meetings Act, to remember that there isn't a meeting, and the Open Public Meetings Act doesn't apply if a quorum of you are not together. However, the converse is also true. When four of you come together and you take action, even if it's outside of a regularly scheduled meeting of the Bellevue City Council, that could constitute action and violation of the Open Public Meetings Act. And so for this reason, we caution you to beware of regular, of getting together outside of regularly scheduled public meetings at things like site visits, retreats, dinners, social gatherings, that sort of thing. One of the sort of practical recommendations that we make for something like this is if you think there's an event where it's likely that there's going to be a quorum of four of you that will come together, communicate that to city staff. One of the things they can consider doing is noticing that as a public meeting, and making sure that the public is aware that that event is occurring, that there will be a quorum of the city council that are there together for that event. Another way of handling that, of course, is to evaluate how many people will be in attendance and making sure that there's not going to be a quorum of you together. The final thing that you can do is ensure that you're not doing anything that would constitute action at that event or gathering. So talk about your kids, your dogs, don't talk about things that may come before you as a council, because if you do that, you could be conducting deliberations, discussions that would constitute action and violation of the Open Public Meetings Act. So this is where things tend to get a little bit complicated, and lawyers nerd out on the issue, but this is the concept of serial meetings. So these are circumstances in which you may not intend to have a collective discussion of a quorum of your body, but that ends up happening by virtue of using a variety of methods of communicating with each other that could constitute a discussion of more than three of you, four of you, in violation of the Open Public Meetings Act. So for example, one of you emails another, a third one texts, you know, then the second one texts the third, and then that person has an in-person meeting with the fourth, and there's some sort of kind of collective deliberation or discussion of an issue, that's what could potentially constitute a serial meeting. So make sure that if you're talking about an issue with another member of the council, that you ensure that that's a one-on-one discussion, that it's not going further, that there isn't the risk of involving other people in that discussion in a way that would constitute four of you coming together to deliberate on an issue. An important caveat to this principle is that the passive receipt of information by four or more of you doesn't constitute a meeting in violation of the Open Public Meetings Act. So a really good example of this, that you probably experience all the time, is receiving an email from city staff about something that's going to come before you. You all are receiving that email, and I can pretty much guarantee that who sent, the person who's sending it to you has language on there that says, "Do not reply all." And the reason for that is that receiving that information passively, as long as you all are not commenting or discussing it amongst yourselves, doesn't constitute action and violation of the Open Public Meetings Act. If you were to start commenting back and forth about what you had received, then you are risking doing that. So that is the reason for the cautionary warning, please don't reply all. You can receive that information all seven of you at the same time. That's not a violation of the Open Public Meetings Act. So secret ballots are one of the things that are clearly prohibited under the Open Public Meetings Act. You can't vote by secret ballot, whether it's in an executive session or behind closed doors. If you take a preliminary vote in the hallways or prior to coming into a meeting, that is a violation of the Open Public Meetings Act, and whatever action you take could be So sort of one step removed from that, secret voting, secret ballots, are agreements to agree. And so we have an example of this that came up in the city of Seattle. That's an actual document that was probably obtained through a Public Records Act, which I'm going to talk, request, which we're going to talk about a little bit later, when the Seattle City Council was talking, discussing potential repeal of the head tax, and essentially, there was a process by which individuals were determining where each of the council members were on the issue that was to come before them. Somebody sued the Seattle, the city of Seattle, it was a violation of the Open Public Meetings Act, and in that case, the Court of Appeals looked at the evidence and determined that there could be sufficient evidence to constitute a violation of the Open Public Meetings Act there, based on this sort of indication that there was an attempt to figure out where everybody was on an issue. And so again, that is something that is prohibited by the Open Public Meetings Act. You can gather information about something that's going to come before you, but the actual deliberations and vote on the issue that comes before you is supposed to happen in an open public meeting, and that is the basic principle of the Open Public Meetings So some of these procedural requirements probably aren't things that you're going to have to face on a regular basis as council members, because you're going to have city staff help you with these items, but some of them are helpful for you to be aware of so that you can understand what the certain components are that go into compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. And so one of those requirements is that for regularly scheduled meetings, and we're at one of those right now, that those are established by an ordinance of the city, and that for these regularly scheduled meetings, you have an agenda that has to be posted online. that you're going to have to face on a regular basis as council members, because you're going to have city staff help you with these items. But some of them are helpful for you to be aware of so that you can understand what the certain components are that go into compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. And so one of those requirements is that for regularly scheduled meetings, and we're at one of those right now, that those are established by an ordinance of the city and that for these regularly scheduled meetings, you have an agenda that has to be posted online 24 hours in advance of the meeting. And any member of this body can amend that agenda by moving to add or remove an item from the agenda. And if that's seconded and approved, then that amendment can occur. That's not a violation of the Open Public Meetings Act. That is allowed for a regularly scheduled meeting, and that, I think, happened earlier tonight at this meeting. So distinct from regular meetings are special meetings. And so special meetings are not your regularly scheduled meetings, but they are called by your presiding officer, so most likely the mayor or whoever is sitting in for the mayor if she's not available. For special meetings, there must be advance notice, 24 hours in advance, and it has to be delivered to each of you. And I have seen individuals actually sue cities for failing to comply with that component. So that is something that your city staff will take care of for you if a special meeting is scheduled, making sure that you are each provided notice at least 24 hours in advance of that meeting. It also has to be delivered to various media outlets who have requested that that notice go to them. It has to be posted on the city's website and displayed at the entrance to the meeting. But for your purposes, I think the important distinction for you to keep in mind about special meetings is that unlike regular meetings where you can add things or delete things from the agenda, you can't take action at a special meeting unless it appears on the agenda that is posted 24 hours in advance. Meeting minutes, again, are something that are largely taken care of for you by city staff, but it is a requirement of the Open Public Meetings Act that minutes be taken. The exception to that is in executive sessions, when minutes are not taken, and you should not take notes in executive sessions. And also, you should not disclose anything that is discussed in executive sessions, and I'm going to talk about those in a little more detail in a minute. But the one thing that will be entered into the meeting minutes for executive sessions is the purpose of the executive session and how long it will be conducted for. So a couple of recent developments to the Open Public Meetings Act since I was here the last time is that there were some amendments made to it based on everyone's experience during the COVID-19 era. And so one of those revisions is that except in emergencies, that governing bodies must provide an opportunity for public comment at or before a regular meeting at which action is to be taken. Obviously, you did that tonight. Meetings that are subject to the OPMA must be held at a physical location where the public can attend in person with very limited exceptions that largely have to do with emergencies and that you're encouraged, but not required, to provide remote access to those meetings. The kinds of issues that we really didn't think about before the COVID era, but now are memorialized in statute. So I spoke a little bit about executive sessions, but again, they are the one exception to deliberating in an open public meeting, and they are very limited. So before you go into an executive session, the presiding officer needs to state on the record, and it will go into the minutes, the purpose of the executive session, and the time that the executive session will be concluded. If the executive session is going on and you find that that is not sufficient time for you to conclude your executive session, the presiding officer needs to come back out and announce that the executive session will be extended for whatever period of time. Then you can't go back into regular session until that executive session period has concluded. So I'm not going to go over in detail all of the reasons that you might convene an executive session, but I've listed some of the most regularly used ones here. So the first being the selection of a site or acquisition of real estate. If you consider the minimum price at which real estate will be offered for sale. To review negotiations on the performance of publicly bid contracts. To review and evaluate complaints or charges brought against a public officer or employee, but the officer or employee can request that that actually occur in the general session, your regular meeting. To evaluate the qualifications of an applicant for public employment or to review the performance of a public employee. But discussions of salary, conditions of employment, and the final hiring decision has to occur in the public session. To evaluate the qualifications of a candidate for appointment to elective office, but the final appointment decision has to be made in the public session. And then finally, to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to enforcement actions pending litigation, a potential litigation, but not just because a lawyer is present in the executive session. It has to actually fall within that narrow identification of the subject of the executive session. There are other reasons for convening an executive session. If you think that you have something that you want to discuss, you're not sure whether it falls within one of the specified categories for an executive session. Again, that's a very good question for you to raise with city staff to determine it, whether it does. But the one thing I will caution you is that the courts have construed executive session topics very narrowly. So for example, I mentioned one of the subjects in the list that I just read to you was the minimum price at which real estate will be offered for sale or lease. We had a relatively recent court decision on that. And in that decision, the court said that it limits discussion to consideration of the lowest acceptable value to sell or lease property and contextual issues that might influence the price, such as impacts on jobs, environmental risks, the quantity of the land, and property improvements, were all things that needed to have been discussed in general session. I think many of us lawyers were surprised about how narrowly the court construed the purpose of the executive session in that case, but I think it just underscores that when you're having those executive session conversations, you really do need to keep it within the confines of what the statute allows and that those larger contextual discussions, your deliberations, and your final decision really need to happen out in the open public meeting. Okay, so this is the teeth of the statute. What happens if there's a violation of the Open Public Meetings Act? So the first risk is that it's mandatory for someone, if someone brings an Open Public Meetings Act lawsuit against the city and they prevail, they will get their attorney fees and costs. And those can be significant and much more than the second item that's listed there, which is the civil penalties that can be imposed against you individually as a member. If you violate the Open Public Meetings Act, which is $500 for the first violation or $1,000 for any subsequent violation. A violation of the Open Public Meetings Act is also a potential basis for a recall action against you for your office. And then probably, in my opinion, the two most important risks of an Open Public Meetings Act violation are invalidation of potential action. So we actually had two very recent court decisions on this issue just a few weeks ago. The first, which you may have seen in the news, was an Arthur West case involving the Walla Walla City Council. In that case, there was a special meeting where the agenda identified an executive session where the process was that they were to discuss, I think it was eight or nine potential candidates for a city manager and to select the five finalists. But actually, during the executive session, they came to consensus that one finalist was the leading candidate. So they came out of the executive session and said that and directed the city to proceed with making the hiring decision with respect to that individual. Mr. West sued the city. The lower court dismissed the case for reasons that included his delay in bringing that lawsuit. So the hiring decision occurred in November of 2022. Mr. West sued about four months later. But when that case went up on appeal, the Court of Appeals said, "No, that wasn't too long of a delay. An individual has two years to sue under the Open Public Meetings Act." And specifically noted that because Mr. West had not requested invalidation of the hiring decision as the remedy in his lawsuit, that it wasn't prejudicial to the city. But what I want to explain to you next is that a couple of days later, we had a kind of a parallel court decision out of Eastern Washington where the court confirmed that any person has standing to bring an action to invalidate an action taken in violation of the Open Public Meetings Act. And in that case, again, the lower court had held that the individual had delayed too long in bringing the lawsuit. This had to do with a letter about the governor's authority to take action with respect to the COVID pandemic. And the Court of Appeals said, "No, this individual didn't delay too long, and the action is invalidated." So if you put those two cases together, it really does suggest that if you take an action in violation of the OPMA, there's a real risk that that could be invalidated. And you can understand how in a circumstance like, for example, hiring a city manager, that could be extremely prejudicial to the city if you have an individual operating in a role like that for a period of time where that decision is then invalidated. So just a cautionary warning for you with respect to the Open Public Meetings Act. And then finally, I think really the biggest risk of an OPMA violation is the potential loss of public trust and confidence. The whole purpose of the Open Public Meetings Act is to give the public a view into your process and your decision-making and your decisions. And so that is what you should keep in mind. I'll pause quickly to see if anyone has any questions before I head into the second statute, which is the Public Records Act.
I just wanted to clarify, just curious. So the city manager that they hired could have been fired after all that time if they had requested that they be invalidated in their hiring?
So the court's inquiry would have been, is there substantial prejudice to the city from that? And I think that that would have been a close call. I think hopefully the city would have come out ahead on that and said, "Look, you can't invalidate that decision because of all of the ramifications of something like that." But we don't have quite yet a court decision that directly answers that question. And so it was just sort of luck in the situation that the plaintiff didn't request invalidation of the decision. He wanted other things. He wanted the penalty. He wanted attorney fees and costs. But that's the risk. It is one of the available remedies. He just happened to not request it in that case.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sure. Any other questions? Great. Okay, I'm going to turn to the second statute, which is the Public Records Act. And like the Open Public Meetings Act, the Public Records Act, or PRA, as you'll often hear it referred to, is a strongly worded mandate for broad disclosure of public records. Again, its purpose is to give the public insight into the conduct of government and to allow them to review your records without having a reason for doing so. It was enacted to increase governmental transparency and accountability by making public records accessible to the public. And like the OPMA, the PRA also has a training requirement, and that's why we're here doing this. So the basics of the Public Records Act are that it applies to all state and local agencies and requires disclosure of all public records upon request unless they fall within specific exemptions under the Public Records Act. Courts tend to liberally construe the disclosure provisions and narrowly construe the exemptions. There's also no official format required for a public records act. You don't need to use magic words. You don't need to give it to any particular person. You don't need to submit it on any particular form. So the city of Bellevue does have forms available and a website, you know, process where someone can make a public records act, but someone can also make it by sending an email and making a request. The one requirement is that the request has to be sufficiently clear that you would have noticed that what the individual is doing is requesting records. But again, courts would tend to construe that fairly broadly. And if an agency fails to respond to a request under the Public Records Act, the requester, like with the OPMA, can bring a lawsuit against the city for failing to do that. So what is a public record? It's any writing containing information relating to the conduct of government or the performance of any governmental or proprietary function prepared, owned, used, or retained by any state or local agency, regardless of the physical form or characteristics. So it can include what you think of typically as physical records, something in a file. But it can also include all kinds of electronic records, such as emails, texts, voice messages, tweets, instant messages, photos, videos, social media posts, and other electronically stored documents, database reports, spreadsheets, all that. A requester is entitled to all non-exempt records, and they can specifically request that electronic records be produced in electronic format. So emails. So when we started with the Public Records Act, it was pretty easy. Physical paper copies that would get copied and provided to people who requested them. And then we went into the world, the age of emails, and that thing made things a little bit more complicated. And then, as you'll hear, they've gotten even more complicated as we've gotten into the world of social media, instant messaging, and all of that. So the thing for you to keep in mind is that emails that are sent on any device that you use for your city business are going to be likely presumed to be a public record unless it's clearly not related to the conduct of your business as a city council member. However, purely personal emails on your home computers probably would not consider to be public records. The issue is going to be when you combine those two things. And so I'm going to have some suggestions for you about how to avoid crossing that line where you would have to go through your personal emails and kind of pull out potentially emails relating to your public work that could be considered public records. So personal phones, text messages, and calls that you have sent or made relating to the conduct of government are public records, even if they're made on your personal cell phone. Likewise, if you're making calls, those call logs could be considered a public record. And so that means a log that shows both your phone calls made related to your role as a city council member and then your personal calls. However, if the logs didn't play any role in the conduct of your work as a city council member, then that, under that case, is not something that a public records requester is going to be able to likely get under the Public Records Act. So social media posts. If you are posting on social media sites like Facebook or Instagram or anything else, any other platform that you may be using, if your posts relate to the conduct of your work as a city council member and they're prepared within the scope of that work and your official capacity, then those would be public records. And so I've listed there the factors that courts will tend to look at in determining whether those posts would be considered a public record. Things like whether your position requires the post, whether the agency directed the post, and probably most broadly, whether the post furthered the city's interests. So to the extent that you are posting on social media, if it is not a official sanctioned city conduct, social media post, my suggestion to you is that you make very clear that the post is in your personal capacity. Fully, most of you have different profiles for your sort of personal participation in social media and your official city participation in social media. Keep those posts related to your official, your official posts on your official profile, your personal posts on your personal profile. Just a quick note on AI, because that's the hot topic that everyone is thinking about now. It is conceivable that if you were using AI for any reason, for the conduct of your work, you wanted to get some ideas about an issue or do some research on it, it's possible that your prompt that you put into AI or the results that you received from using that prompt could be a public record, particularly if they were used or saved by you in any way. And note that those can be potentially saved in the program, so something for you to be aware of to the extent that you're considering using AI in your official capacity in any way. All right, so I've referenced this, but if you're going to take one thing away from this presentation today, it should be this, which is to segregate your public and your personal records. And this is going to assist you because your primary role with respect to complying with the Public Records Act is likely going to be to help provide records in the event that the city gets a request. And you want that to be as straightforward for the city as possible and frankly, as straightforward for you as possible. And so to the extent that you are merging your personal and your public communications, it's going to be much, much harder for you to do that. So I highly suggest that you keep all your email communications related to your city email, any text message communications in the, you know, one place where they could easily be retrieved if you need to. Same thing with phone calls, to the extent that's possible. If you have city documents, keep them together in a folder on your personal computer. And so, you know, in the event that there's a request or some sort of question about whether the city has appropriately asked you for your records or what your record keeping is like, you want to be able to use what we call a declaration where you say, "Here is how I keep my records and my communications for my city work. This is how I always do it. And in response to this public records request, that is where I went to gather them and provided them to the city staff member who then collected them for you and produced them to the requester." So this is the most important tip and guidance that I can give you in tonight's presentation. You also need to make sure that you're complying with retention time periods, and I'm going to talk about that in a little bit more detail. And like I said, be prepared to produce records to the extent that you need to in response to a records request. So a couple, like the Open Public Meetings Act, there are some procedural requirements that are largely going to be handled by city staff. But it is important for you to be aware of them so you can understand your role. One of the initial requirements of the Public Records Act is that when a public One of the initial requirements of the Public Records Act is that when a public records request is received, there has to be a response within five days. It's very short. And within the five days, the city has to do one of those three things that are listed there, either provide the records or acknowledge receipt of the request and provide a reasonable estimate of the time that it will require to respond or request more time to respond or to deny the request with a proper claim of exemption under the Public Records Act. And because that time period is so short and because a public records act request can be made in any format, if you're getting something like an email from a constituent saying, hey, I want all the documents on this issue, make sure you're forwarding that request to city staff immediately so that they can be aware of that. It's going to be unusual that you're going to get a request for that like that. Usually, they will be submitted directly to the city through the public records portal. But if you think you've gotten a public records request or you're not sure, check with city staff to determine whether you have and whether anything needs to be done in response to So the obligations for searching records, again, are going to, you know, probably be coordinated through city staff, and they will help instruct you on what you're going to need to do. If you've segregated, it should be very easy for you. But the standard under the Public Records Act is that the city has to conduct a, quote, "adequate" search that is reasonably calculated to uncover all the records. It's pretty clear that courts have interpreted this fairly broadly. Again, it's not, you know, the narrowest definition of terms that are in a request, but it has to be, you know, fairly broad search terms that are designed to gather the records that are actually responsive to the request. They can't just do a perfunctory search. They have to follow obvious leads and identify the records that are responsive to the request and provide them to the requestor. So these are some examples of some cases where courts held that searches were not adequate. So I mentioned you can't use very narrow search terms. In the first case, the court held you had to use wildcard symbols like asterisks and various versions of a word to ensure that the records were being located. And that when there's a failure to search for responsive records, that is something that courts use against cities, and they can impose penalties and fees, as I'm going to talk about in a couple of minutes. We had a relatively recent change to the Public Records Act where a court clarified what has to be done to close a request. Again, this is something that city staff is largely going to handle for you, but it just kind of underscores that sometimes public records requests can continue on a little bit longer than you would ideally hope that they will. So in order to close a request, the city needs to tell the individual information on how the request was fulfilled and why the agency is now closing the request. That is, the city conducted an adequate search, identified all the responsive records, reviewed them for exemptions, and then produced those responsive records to the requestor. They have to say to the requestor that they have a one-year statute of limitations in which they can bring a lawsuit related to the Public Records Act if they want to, and they have to make a statement that the requestor can ask follow-up questions within a reasonable timeframe, and that timeframe can be set by the city. So that can lead to additional clarification and additional requests. Okay, so I think a lot of people think, well, are there situations in which a public records act request can be denied? It's true, not all requests are valid, but most are. And again, courts will interpret them broadly. But here are some examples of requests that don't actually constitute public records act requests. So a request for information as opposed to records is not a public records act request. A request for all or substantially all records of the city, give me all the records of the city of Bellevue, is not a public records act request. It has to relate to a particular topic. And if the request is made by a bot or is a repetitive robotic request, it does not constitute a public records act request. You're also obligated to get some training on retention periods. What I will tell you about retention periods is they are very complex. There's a very lengthy and detailed schedule that is established by the state. The city also has retention periods. If you're unsure about how long you should be keeping city records that are related to your role as a city council member, have a conversation with city staff about what your process should be. You want to make sure you're keeping records for the appropriate period. At the same time, you don't want to keep things that aren't public records or that are sort of more transitory records if there's a risk that you would then have to turn those over in a public records act request. There is actually a benefit to making sure that you're keeping the records that you need to keep and getting rid of the records that you don't need to keep. It's important to note that there are periods that apply to electronic records in addition to hard copy records that you might have, and you should have conversations with city staff if you have questions about that. So as I mentioned, there is the opportunity, again, to sue the city for a violation of the Public Records Act. Those suits can be filed if the city doesn't respond to a request in a reasonable time or if the agency wrongfully denies an opportunity to inspect or copy records. The court has to take into account the free and open examination of records is in the public interest, even though it can cause inconvenience or embarrassment to the city or to its officials. And like the OPMA, there are consequences if there is a violation of the Public Records Act. Again, an award of attorney fees and costs is mandatory in the event that someone sues the city for a Public Records Act violation and prevails, and those can be substantial. And then unlike the Open Public Meetings Act, the potential for penalties in the Public Records Act context can be very significant. We've seen courts backing off a little bit from that in recent years, but we've seen awards as much as $100 a day for each record that was withheld. It can be tens of thousands, if not more than $100,000 in penalties if there's a violation. Judges use their discretion in fashioning them, but you should be careful, again, to make sure that you're complying with the Public Records Act, that you can document what was done to search for records because that helps reduce the risk of penalties that can be awarded against the city. So with that, I'll pause and ask if anyone has any questions about the Public Records Act or the OPMA or just generally about open government requirements.
I'm not seeing any, but we do appreciate your beautiful pictures.
Oh, you're very welcome. Thank you very much for having me.
Okay, thank you. That was great. Appreciate it. Okay, anything more that you want to say, city manager? Or do you want to move on to the next item?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move into the next study session. This is a study session on King County wastewater treatment division's 2026 sewer rate and capacity charge proposal and the 20-year forecast. And we have guests from King County's wastewater treatment division, and that is Cameron Gurrell coming to the table. He's the director of the wastewater treatment division for King County. We also have Lucy Liu, our director of Bellevue Utilities, and Ella Williams, our intergovernmental policy advisor. They will be covering the proposal from King County for the 26 sewer rate proposal and also the 20-year forecast. And then they'll give the council an opportunity to provide some feedback to King County, and staff will also be requesting council consider directing a letter to the county with your feedback. So with that, I'll turn it over to, I believe Lucy is kicking it off. So Lucy, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. Tonight, you'll receive an informational briefing from Director Gurrell on the topics that Ms. Carlson indicated. And after the briefing by King County staff, Bellevue staff will be seeking your direction for feedback to include in a letter to King County about the topics that Director Gurrell will brief you on. So just as background, King County is a very important regional partner for Bellevue Utilities. The King County Wastewater Treatment Division provides wastewater treatment services to Bellevue to protect public health. And they operate three large regional treatment facilities, including the South's Treatment Plant in Renton, which is where most of Bellevue's sewage is treated. The cost that we pay to King County is the largest bill the Bellevue Sewer Utility pays. These costs are directly passed through to Bellevue Rate Payers consistent with our financial policies, and they represent more than half of the typical residential sewer bill and about roughly about one quarter of the total utility bill for water, sewer, and storm and surface water services. With a focus on community safety and health, utility services are essential life services, and affordability is especially important goal for the Bellevue community. That said, given the impact of rising sewer costs on Bellevue customers, we appreciate King County's ongoing efforts to look for opportunities to contain cost and to mitigate rate increases as much as possible. Each year, the wastewater treatment division updates the rates that they charge to contract agencies. These rates are reviewed by the Regional Water Quality Committee, where Councilmember Lee represents the Sound Cities Association, and the rates are approved by the King County Council. So after Director Gurrell's briefing, Bellevue staff will seek your direction to consider directing staff to develop a letter to the King County Council regarding the proposed King County 2026 sewer rate, the long-term forecasting work, and the regional wastewater surfaces plan updating. With that, I'll turn it over to Director Gurrell.
Good evening. Thank you very much. It's very nice to be here. A lot of familiar faces, and it's always a pleasure to come to the city of Bellevue. I'm going to first start by thanking you for your regional leadership. Bellevue's voice is an important one. We take it very seriously, and the city shows up in many ways at the Regional Water Quality Committee, as was mentioned, and also at the MUPAC, the Municipal Water Pollution Abatement Advisory Committee, which is a group mostly of staff but some elected officials as well. I've got probably too many slides for the time I have allocated, so I'm going to go through them as rapidly as I can. Happy to answer questions along the way or at the end. First, just a couple of brief project updates of things going on in Bellevue from our division. And I'll note on the slide deck, you should have gotten copies of the slide deck, there are two links to videos for this and then the next slide. I would encourage you to watch the videos. They are both informative and entertaining. I believe the mayor is in the second video here, so we appreciate your work on those as well. So this project, we've talked about before, this is a project to improve sewer line that's flowing from Mercer Island over to Bellevue and then, as Director Liu mentioned, down to our South Treatment Plant. This is a project that benefits Bellevue by upgrading regional infrastructure that Bellevue is contributing into. This will last for many, many decades. It's a complicated project across the north part of Mercer Island and underneath the East Channel running between Mercer Island and Bellevue under Lake Washington. Our Coal Creek Project is also an important project in the city here. Really excited because this project is the first project of its kind to win a Salmon Safe Award. This project is going to not only replace an aging piece of infrastructure, it's going to improve regional trail network, add to accessibility for disabled users of that area, and replace, and then also improve salmon habitat along the way. So very excited to see that project continue to move forward. I'm here tonight to talk about our sewer rate. This is our calendar. I won't go through this, but we are obviously in May. Tomorrow, we'll be briefing the RWQC, the Regional Water Quality Committee, on the county executive's 2026 sewer rate proposal, and then the county council will be taking action by the end of June to adopt that rate. That is a statutorily required deadline for us to adopt that rate by July 1st of every year, and that rate goes into effect the following January 1st. So this is the rate for 2026 that's on the table this year. So what are the changes between last year and this year? We've extended that forecast. The city has been very interested in seeing better and longer financial forecasts, and we're trying to follow that here, moving from a 10-year forecast out to a 20-year forecast. We've also been updating this forecast with the most up-to-date information related to the CSO consent decree. So portion of our system is a combined system that has combined sewer overflows or CSO discharges. Mostly, that's located in the city of Seattle, but it is part of our overall capital program. The large project in that portfolio is called the Mouth of Duwamish or MDCSO. It is a mega project. There are higher costs. It is driving the rates. I'll come back to that a little bit in this presentation. Then third, we've got a revised approach, frankly, a better, more transparent approach for how we're doing that forecasting. The extra 10 years helps us to do that even better. So you're seeing, it's kind of like budget carryovers, you're seeing those now reflected in the rate forecast and before they weren't. So I think this is an even better, more detailed forecast for all of us to look at. This is our, you've seen this graph before. This is our capital program bar chart, and the different colors reflect the different types of projects that we have. The two colors of blue down at the bottom are our asset management. That's the state of good repair, keeping the system in good working order, both for our conveyance portion of our system, so the large pipes into which Bellevue's smaller pipes flow, and then our plants themselves. Those are the two blue colors. Up at the top of those charts are that kind of orange color. That's our capacity improvements necessary to serve the needs of new growth. The big one in the middle are our regulatory compliance pieces. That's in the green, the two shades of green there you can see. And a big portion of that is CSO compliance. So no question that those projects that are now being required by that consent decree are having a material effect on our capital program and material effect on the rates. I'll note that in the red box on the graph, there are some things on this chart that are still unknown. We have what we call known unknowns. There are nutrient removal costs that we are trying to get ready for but haven't yet landed. That nutrient removal state requirements have been in litigation for some years. There, in fact, the nutrient general permit was found invalid by a state hearings board not too long ago. So the litigation is not yet over, and so we don't know exactly what our duty and requirements are going to be. So that is a known unknown as of today. And then we have things what we call contaminants of emerging concern, PFAS, if you've seen the news coverage about that or had that discussion here, that's an example of that kind of thing. There may be other CSO control cost updates that are likely going to happen. And then we've been having, as I'm sure you've seen occasionally with public facilities here in the city, some security challenges at our facilities, damage or trespass, and so we're needing to make a few upgrades there, too. The exact cost of those, we do not know yet, though that's in assessment. So examples of things that we are still needing to reflect on this but haven't yet been fully reflected. And it's a big deal. You can see on the scale on the right, the size of this is, a capital program is pretty significant. We're in 2025 now. We're scheduled, that's the first smallest kind of bar on the far left. Spending $400 million or so plus this year. That's over $1 million a day on capital, and that projection is scheduled to triple just in a few years' time. So spending 800 million or a billion or more than a billion per year, year over year. It's a significant capital program. No two ways about it, that is a big deal, and it's what's driving the rates. How are we paying for that? It's a combination. A lot of cash, that's in the bottom part of this, cash-funded capital, as well as bond-funded or other forms of debt. We do issue debt as a part of our work, and it is a fairly sizable portion of how we pay for these. Sewer rates go to repay that debt. We do our best to have the lowest cost, most cost-efficient debt that we possibly can, and a lot of that is municipal tax-exempt debt. That's an area that we're talking with the city and others about, trying to preserve that authority going forward. We also use federal programs like WIFIA. That's in that black area. We have a nice federal master loan agreement with the US EPA that's going to help us manage costs as well. So those are the different forms of how we pay for it. You can see in the two boxes, as of today, we are about 77% leveraged and about $4.6 billion worth of assets and $3.6 billion of debt. That's going to rise significantly with this capital program, but the actual amount of leverage is going to actually reduce over time. You see, assets will grow to $15.6 billion, debt up to nine, so only 60% leverage at the end of that day. Nevertheless, it's a big amount of debt. It's a big amount of cost. We're also looking to increase some of our operations to take care of that system. The system is aging. It's a little older than I am, and I'm 62. This system was largely created in the mid-1960s, and so we have assets that are that old that are still in service. We're doing our best to keep that up, but like anything else, those need attention, and that needs help from our operations and maintenance section within our division. We're doing a little bit of adds to that section, and you can see that's the additional increases on top of the standard growth for that division over time, trying to make sure that we have the horsepower we need to make. sure that we have the horsepower we need to make sure that we run the system 24/7/365. This is, I'll remind you, a system that never stops. It is going every day, all day, and if it does stop, there's a big problem. So we need to make sure that we've got that continuing to go. Here's kind of the punchline slide. This is the sewer rate. The single row chart up at the top is the one you've most recently seen. That's the adopted rate for 2025 and the forecast associated with that rate. You can see the rate in 2025. This is what your residents are paying these right now, about $58.28 for what's called an RCE, or it's essentially equivalent to a single-family home. That's a monthly charge. The rate forecast that we developed last year had increases, starting for 2026. They have a 7% increase up to 62.36, a few more sevens, some eight and a quarters, and nine and a quarters, so that that rate would roughly double within about 10 years' time. The new rate forecast is more sobering. It, again, goes out 20 years instead of 10, so there are two rows. Again, 2025 for reference, but then, starting in 2026, instead of 7%, we have proposed seven and a half. So not too far off, but it's still a little bit higher. So instead of 62.36, it would be 62.66. But then, the trouble kind of starts after that, and that's reflected in that bar chart with all the colors on it and the higher rates that we're showing here, especially in the 2027 to 2031 period, where we've got higher percentage cost increases year over year to pay for that higher capital program. So instead of doubling in 10 years, we're looking like we're doubling closer to six. So no question about it. It is a big deal. Now, some of the future percentage increases are more modest, you can see. Some of those are dropping down into the twos or fours, or even less than two in the out years. I won't say that we'll hold to those because we have some of those known unknowns. We still don't know some of those costs that will come in. So this is our best forecast that we have, given what we know today. There's a lot of effort going on. Again, I'll recognize Councilmember Lee, serving on the RWQC, your staff working at MUPAC. These are monthly or more frequent meetings where these rates and the material behind these rates are going through as much transparency and scrutiny as we can provide to them so that you have information that you need to help weigh in on that. And we are looking forward to getting a letter from the city of Bellevue, should you choose to direct staff to develop one. The other thing that's in front of the county council is that capacity charge. This is the charge for new growth. So people that are building a new home, building an ADU, they have to pay a buy-in charge. That charge can be financed over 15 years, or they can pay it upfront. That is something that the homeowner or the home builder would choose. That charge also rises with additional project costs. That has been in place, I think, for a number of years. It is scheduled to expire, though, by 2030, and we'll be working with the region to renew that capacity charge and update the methodology in this next couple of years as well. Again, make it simpler, a little more transparent, easier to understand. So working with a consultant, and that will be a transparent process to update that. That is another decision that the county council has to make. The rate for the monthly charge for that capacity charge, and again, this is only for new development, existing homeowners wouldn't pay this, would rise from 76.09 up to 77.99. That's a two-and-a-half percent increase. As we get that update, fully update with the methodology, we'll probably see some of those numbers shift around. So this is the summary. We have big rising costs. The rates are following those rising costs. What are the big drivers? Regulatory is the biggest one, but also asset management, the state of good repair, and capacity to serve growth. We're also addressing operational needs with this, and we're continuing to assess a number of options and working with our city partners to mitigate those high costs and work towards better affordability for ratepayers. The proposal for adoption for 2026, and remember, the county council is only making the single year decisions. They're making a rate decision for 2026 only. They don't lock in those future rate forecasts. Those are look-aheads, but they're not officially adopted. So the single year rate for 2026 would be 62.66. That's slightly above the forecast for that we made last year of 62.36. That represents a seven-and-a-half percent increase, and then the capacity charge would rise by two-and-a-half percent. Now, that concludes my slides for the rate, which I think is the main reason for me to be here. I have a few slides on our long-range plan, too. I can either pause now to take questions or proceed with the rest of the slide deck.
I think you can proceed. Yeah, thank you.
So we are undertaking an update to our Regional Waste Water Services Plan. That's our long-range plan for the system that we manage here. The last version of that plan was adopted in 1999. It had our 30-year horizon out to the year 2030. It's a good time to adopt that before we get to that horizon year. And it provides policy, direction for the system as a whole, and directs a number of different elements within that. So we're starting that process. Process is getting started with a vision for clean water. I want to also commend, again, the city of Bellevue and Sound Cities Association, who pushed to have that vision process early in the overall RWSP update process, and we've reflected that in our process and our charter. That vision for clean water is an important early step. We think it'll be a vision statement, probably a high-level statement. You might have a similar statement in one of your comprehensive planning documents, looking ahead to what your goals are for the city of Bellevue. The same kind of idea applies here for the regional wastewater system. That vision we're proposing would actually look out quite a long distance. So a horizon out to 75 years, out to the year 2100. So in that process, we are trying to ask a prompting question. It's a very kind of blue-sky question. So imagining what's possible, if we get this right. And so the, what's possible is that blue-sky statement. What do we really want for the regional wastewater system out in the year 2100? If we were there to see the people that might be in your seats at that time, what do we want them to inherit as the functionality, the level of cleanliness, the affordability, all the different aspects of that system? What do we want them to inherit? So it's a good question to ask. We are likely to include a number of known regional shared values, like water quality and protecting public health. Those are part of our mission statement here today. Equity and social justice, affordability, sustainability, a number of things that I know the city cares about quite a lot. So those will be elements likely of that vision statement. Where are we in that process? Well, we've actually gotten started this last month. This shows you kind of, in very simple terms, some of the elements associated with that RWSP or plan update, and then where the vision for clean water fits in. So we're right in that process now. We got started in the middle of last month, and we'll be talking about it at RWQC tomorrow and having other opportunities for folks to weigh in. If you're on social media, you'll see some of our postings inviting members of the public to weigh in on that. We're doing as broad of an outreach as we can. You can see some of the other elements that'll be part of that long-range planning work. They're not unlike what you might do here for your city comprehensive plan or a city transportation plan. Same kinds of ideas. Lot of nuts and bolts go into that, as well as public process. And I think that takes me to my last slide, and I will hand this back over to my colleagues here. Sorry, I advanced too far.
That's all right. Thank you, Director Gorill. Given the increases that WTD is proposing, I just wanted to share with you the different programs that we have in Bellevue to serve our low-income utility customers. We're putting a strong focus on affordability to make sure that we're supporting those who need it the most. So we offer a range of utility bill assistance programs to help residents who may be financially disadvantaged, and these programs are, they're making a real difference in our community. We have ongoing support for low-income seniors and residents with permanent disabilities. Customers that receive a bill directly from Bellevue Utilities that qualify receive a 70% discount on their utility bill. And the customers that are billed indirectly through their housing provider receive a 70% discount. For those facing sudden financial hardship, our emergency assistance program can waive up to four months of basic utility charges. And our newest initiative, which is our Neighbors Helping Neighbors program, offers up to two months of waived bills for households that are passed due on their utility bills. This is a community-funded effort, and we match donations up to $50,000 annually to encourage support. Altogether, these programs serve nearly 1,000 households, and we invest over $1 million annually in these programs. In addition to that, this year, we are launching a new online application portal for our assistance programs that has been created with an emphasis on accessibility based on research from the University of Washington School of Human-Centered Design. Our goal is to make it easier for people to apply. We are also expanding outreach to better connect with community members that are in need, and we're also reviewing our eligibility requirements, and we will bring back recommendations for your consideration later this year as an effort to further expand these assistance programs. Beyond our assistance programs, we continue to pursue state and federal funding opportunities, both for Bellevue and through regional partnerships to help keep rates affordable. We are also looking for opportunities to support King County in seeking external grants or low-interest loans, which would help mitigate repressures on us. This will be a high priority for our council members during the annual trip to Washington, DC, where they will meet with our federal representatives. And last but not least, we are also exploring rate design changes for opportunities to offer more relief where we can. Given the magnitude of their rate proposal and long-term forecast, we look forward to working more closely with WTD to identify a balanced approach that will meet the agency's long-term needs and to prioritize affordability for the region. So at this point, we would like to seek your direction to prepare a letter to King County to convey the city's position about the topics Director Gorill discussed in his briefing, which is the King County proposed 2026 sewer rate, their long-term rate path, and the Regional Waste Water Services Plan update. Staff has developed a recommendation for the letter for your consideration. The staff recommendation is based on our internal review of WTD's proposed sewer rates and the regional discussions at the Metropolitan Water Pollution Abatement Advisory Committee, or MUPAC, and the Regional Water Quality Committee, RWQC. First area we are seeking is your feedback is on the King County proposed 2026 sewer rate. Staff recommends that council would acknowledge the need to address increasing costs, but this impacts affordability for our ratepayers, and that remains a top concern, not only for next year but into the long-term forecast. Second area is your feedback on the long-term forecast. This is the first year that WTD has extended the rate forecast to 20 years, and we appreciate the work that has been done to extend the forecast beyond 10 years. This is something that we have worked with WTD, both at the staff level at MUPAC and through Councilmember Lee's work at RWQC to do. However, we remain concerned about the growth and affordability of sewer rates over the long term. We are also concerned that the rate path is not predictable or smooth. The city would like to see a path that avoids spikes, and that would give the contract agencies like Bellevue the ability to smooth rates and to plan prudently. And we would still like additional information from WTD to assure us that they can deliver the aggressive capital program supported by these rate increases. Staff would request that council consider asking WTD for additional information on what alternatives can be explored to lower the rate path or smooth rates over a longer period of time to reduce the impact on ratepayers. The third area we would like your feedback on is on guiding principles to gauge progress on WTD's implementation of the long-term forecasting methodology to support the ongoing work for long-term forecasting and the Regional Waste Water Services Plan update. Staff have developed some guiding principles for you to consider in how Bellevue will be evaluating how WTD progresses in this work. These guiding principles that we're recommending are consistent with our own internal policies, goals, and practices. And so the first guiding principle we are recommending is work towards generational equity. This aligns with Bellevue's goals and policies. We would like WTD to ensure that everyone that benefits from the system pays equitably for the system. Second is to share changes to rates and forecasts early and clearly. As partners in this work, we would like these long-term forecasts to be shared early in the process and for information to be as transparent as possible. We need to avoid surprises or major rate spikes without discussion. The third guiding principle is continue to refine the forecasting methodology. WTD should consider, or should continue to refine the forecasting methodology and ensure that the assumptions that they are making are the right assumptions, which should be based on historical numbers and past performance. The fourth guiding principle is plan based on what can reasonably be achieved. WTD should be nimble and open to shifting their approach based on what needs to be done and what can realistically be done. They should use best available information to make their assumptions. And the fifth guiding principle that we are recommending is that WTD should prioritize conducting regular assessments of existing assets. This will allow them to plan consistent investments throughout the expected life of our regional assets and would maximize the lifespan of the assets. So this concludes our presentation. We're very happy to answer questions you may have, and would welcome your feedback on the letter.
Okay, thank you. So you're looking for feedback on, A, whether we want to send a letter at all, and B, what we should include in the letter, and you have your recommendation here, which I think you could leave up on the screen. That looks good. And so that's what we're looking for input on. So Councilmember Lee, why don't you start us off?
Thank you, Mayor Robinson. I want to start by thanking Director Cameron for presenting to us tonight. I appreciate all the work that you have done on the long-term forecast and sharing more information on the capital program, as requested by the Regional Water Quality Committee, led by King County Councilmember Claudia Baducci, who happened to be a former mayor and colleague of ours after I was the mayor. So the RWQC work long and hard to work with you, work with the staff, and it's, as you probably see, the council members here, it's a very complex issue, and also, it's something that is also very impactful because it affects our costs and our environment, where we, you know, have to depend on our ability to process wastewater and have clean water so that our environment can be sustained. You know, this effort was established, like you mentioned, about 60-some years ago by our beloved environmental advocate, the father of Four Thrust, Jim Ellis, which is our Bellevue resident. So it's been 60 years. As a result, the system needs revision, needs to change, needs to update, needs to improve capacity, because the population has grown many folds than it was designed to handle. So it's very, very complicated. So we want to thank everybody, especially Councilmember Baducci, for leading this effort, and this is a regional effort. So that's why, you know, I'm happy to be appointed by Sound Cities as a member to work on this issue. So on my colleagues, you know, of the council, I want to provide some more additional insight into the focus of RWQC at the moment. WTD has just started the process of updating the Regional Waste Treatment or Waste Water Services Plan, which will guide investments in the wastewater system for the next 30 years. I think this works, this work is where we can have the most significant and longest-lasting impact. The rates being proposed for 2026 are a culmination of the current plan and the choices King County has made since 1999. I'm concerned, however, about the proposed 2026 rate. So I am more concerned about the long-term forecast, but I'm more concerned about the long-term forecast and WTD's ability to provide a rate path that's predictable and affordable for cities and our ratepayers, as our staff, Lucy, has so well mentioned. affordable for cities and our ratepayers, as our staff Lucy has so well mentioned. I support sending a letter to the King County Council expressing Bellevue's interest in ensuring a sustainable, affordable rate path for our residents. But I would like additional information from WTD on the following. The first is, how will you engage with our cities and community members on this update to the Regional Waste Water Service Plan? Second is, how could the Regional Waste Water Services Plan update, improve long-term forecasting, and leverage new opportunities to reduce costs? I believe that I share this concern, this work that you're doing, with the rest of the Sound Cities members, because it is a regional plan that affects all of us. And we are working very hard, but at the same time, we have other stakeholders that we are all working together, trying to have our own interests, our plan, and our own desire to make it work. So on behalf of the City of Bellevue and also the region, we want to have some idea how you propose to move forward.
So you asked two really good questions.
Thank you.
And let's pause to get an answer.
Thank you for those questions and thank you for your service at RWQC. We will work with Bellevue however is best and works best for Bellevue on the RWSP update. So whether it's at the elected level, the staff level, the community level, you'll find us interested and available and engaged with you on all aspects of that plan. We'll be tailoring that approach to different communities and what works best for them. So we'll be happy to work with your staff to make sure that we plug into the system here at Bellevue in the most effective way possible. And we can make course corrections if it's not working and we need to do something different or better. I think the plan will do what you're asking, Councilmember, which is to look ahead that thirty years. And I think affordability will be a top-level issue all through the planning process. So I heard both for the sewer rate and the forecast, as well as the long-range view that we'll develop in that long-range plan, the idea of predictability, so that you have certainty as to what's looking ahead. I don't think we're doing a great job of that right now, just to be fully honest. The rate forecasts have changed, so we're not delivering on that commitment. I want to do a better job on that now. We start by being transparent. You know what we know, you see under the hood, we open it up, we dig around in there, and you see what we see. And we be responsive to your questions so that if you are concerned about something, we respond to it promptly and effectively and thoroughly. I think we want to apply that to the sewer rate as well as the long-range planning process. So I'm excited to see this work get started, excited to see Bellevue's leadership be a big voice along the way there. I think it is the right opportunity where Bellevue can have the strongest hand on the tiller here to make sure that the plan that is adopted in a few years down the road reflects the needs of the city.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, Director Garrel. Always appreciate you joining us and sharing about the goings-on at WTD, so thank you. I also want to appreciate the staff for always being so mindful of how so many of our actions can impact our ratepayers. Of course, we need utility rates that ensure that we are able to properly maintain our systems, and we need rates that allow us to make timely, critical investments. But we need to always remember that even rate increases that appear to be small can have a big impact on our community members and their budgets. I appreciate how Director Liu and her team examine the short-term and long-term financial impacts of the decisions we make with our utilities and do everything possible to minimize them for the community. Also want to express some appreciation to Councilmember Lee for his leadership on this issue at RWQC. Considering future investments that we need to make with our own infrastructure, I'm just curious, Director Liu, if you have an idea of what our ratepayers are looking at as a percentage rate increase in total over the next twenty years?
What I can tell you is within our, we have a six-year forecast, and our rates are in the seven to seven-and-a-half percentage range, and that's the total bill for, the total utility bill. Now, with these new proposed rates from WTD, that will change. We do not have the information tonight to share with you with the updated forecast, but that's based on our previous forecast.
Okay, good. I would love at some point just to kind of have that information so we can look at the full picture, so thank you for that. And then, too, I'm just curious, you know, so obviously, right now, it seems it's really important that we, that these wastewater rates are raised to, you know, do this really critical work. And I know, you know, possibly for whatever reasons, we've delayed some of the upgrades and now possibly having to pay even more based on that. And I imagine that if we continue to delay any of these upgrades, these improvements, that we'd pay even more later. Is that true? Is that correct?
Very, very likely. Costs never really go down for capital projects looking ahead, that is true. That said, we have a stacking problem here, and you noticed that on the colorful bar chart, as so many things are happening in the same kind of period of time. And so if there was a way to shift some of the timing there, I think we could help a little bit with predictability, with smoothness, maybe a little bit of rate relief. So we are continuing to look as best we can at different options there. But you're correct that if you take one project and move it out, it's probably going to cost you more in the future than it does today. So it is a weighing, a balancing between those options that our decision-makers have to go through.
Thank you. Then also, too, how do these rate increases translate for commercial customers? And will the Regional Waste Water Services Plan address equity between residential and commercial customers?
They do. Commercial customers and multifamily customers and single-family customers all pay a rate based on something called a residential customer equivalent, so the RCE. It is a mechanism by which those rates can be translated from essentially the single-family home as a reference point and then applied to a commercial or a multifamily setting. So that's part of that capacity, that, it's not part of the capacity charges, it's part of the system that we have in place today. We are also looking to update that system. I didn't have it in the slide deck, but we've already started that conversation at MUPAC. And some of the city staff and other Sound Cities representatives are interested in seeing that move forward. We are absolutely ready and able to update that portion of the system, too, to make sure that rates paid across those different customer types remain fair and equitable.
Great, thank you. Also, too, could you speak to the rate increases, why they're so significant in the first ten years, and maybe also, too, about the ability to smooth out rate increases over an extended period of time?
Sure. And we started that a moment ago. We have a stacking problem that if you look back at that bar chart, there's a lot of costs, a lot of capital projects, especially in that twenty-seven to thirty-one period, but it's really across the ten years. So we have asset management projects that are good projects, need to happen to keep the system in a state of good repair. That's one of the city's guiding principles. We agree with that. We have capacity needs to make sure that we can accommodate new growth wherever it occurs across our service area. So those might be upgrades to the East Side Interceptor that serves Bellevue, runs north-south through the city here, to make sure it has adequate capacity for Bellevue's growth, along with the other cities that are served by that particular line. And then there are other lines elsewhere in the system. But I would say the big challenge that we have in the very near term are the regulatory-driven projects. They're on the green there, they're the biggest portion of those bar charts. And of those, the CSO compliance projects are really affecting especially that five-year period. There's no hiding that, that's what's driving that, those costs. And the big project in there is that mouth of the Duamish. It's taken care of five CSO overflow points in one master project, so it's a very good project. It's gonna, but it's a large project, and it's happening right in the Soto area. You can imagine trying to execute a project that is both underground and above ground in a very busy area is not a cheap thing to do. So that's what's happening. I would say if I could go back in time, I would have had those projects dealt with by my predecessors years ago, your predecessors years ago. Let's do those projects when, in times past. They would probably have been a bit cheaper, and they would be done by now. Those decisions were delayed, and we're still talking about that same kind of thing. Where do we put those projects on the timeframe? So your principal talks about generational equity. We want to try to make sure that we build projects that serve over the long term and have people pay for that equitably across that long term as well. So it is a challenge for us right now, but I can tell you, those are the principal drivers that we're dealing with. And we're looking at all the tools in the toolbox, both to see if we can get more money into the system from state or federal sources, see what we can do to lower those project costs, or partner with other agencies to see if there's opportunities to share costs, and employing the best practices we can in terms of capital project delivery. So we'll be using progressive design-build or GCCM, the General Contact or Construction Manager, mechanisms that we need approval from the state to do. Those are the types of things that will help us deliver as best as possible, optimize across that good, fast, and cheap that you probably hear about from your public works folks here. So we're leaving no stone unturned to do this as efficiently and as cost-effectively as we can. But the costs are, I will just say again, they are high.
Thank you. Certainly appreciate the work. Glad, too, that as we move forward and the wastewater rates increase significantly, that we're looking at ways to provide even more financial support to our ratepayers who need it. Obviously, substantially higher rates are going to require substantially more support. And anxious to hear from my colleagues, but I think at this point, I'd be ready to move forward with asking you to prepare a letter that communicates the city's position and that I think what you've proposed, including the guiding principles, are sound. So thank you.
Okay, we're going to take a ten-minute break. We're going to resume at quarter till. Councilmember Noonhouse.
All right. Thank you again, Cameron, Lucy, and Ella, for the presentation. Going to echo a few of my colleagues' comments. I made some of the comments during the PIC presentation with SCA there. Actually, speaking of that, I know that after, or during, or right after that meeting, there was a suggestion to have a summit, and the City of Kirkland was interested in hosting a summit for, I believe, East Side Cities, but maybe beyond that, to discuss this further. Has there been any movement on that at all that you're aware of?
I'm not aware of specific movement. We did receive kind of an outline of that, and frankly, we think the idea is a very smart one. We would fully support that and would want to work with Bellevue, Kirkland, and others to execute that. The idea was next spring roughly to bring voices together, and the idea was multiple utilities, and wastewater is one of maybe several areas of focus. We think it's a smart idea.
Well, I do as well, just because, and some of your comments, and I appreciate the fact that you are being very transparent in terms of these rates and why the increases, et cetera. But I also heard, you know, just the way you were providing some feedback, it did not sound like a lot of confidence on the latter half of the twenty years, given the known unknowns, right, as part of that. So I'm curious, when do you have a timeline for when you might find out some of those known unknowns and what other state mandates or regional issues might come to further light that might impact those rates? And do you have, at this point, the first ten years, what is your level of confidence that is not going to go, you know, above the ten percent or higher interest rate each year?
Yeah, very fair questions. I'll try to keep my answers brief. You know, I mentioned the nutrients litigation. We're tracking that, we're part of that litigation process, and we've got a very close eye on that, and we're trying to keep the region apprised as we know more on that. So if there's some real-time developments, we're happy to keep the city informed. That would be one example of something where that moves from a known unknown to much more of a known known, and then we can reflect that in the next rate process when we know more about that. So that, I think, you know, if we're lucky, we will know more about that in the next, I don't know, year or year-plus. The Regional Waste Water Services Plan is another really good opportunity as that's developed to, since that's a long-range plan, that actually gives us a much better picture out to thirty years. So we'll cover that twenty plus another ten.
Right.
Now, we won't know exactly what every project will be to implement that plan, but you'll have a better sense as to the thrust and direction of that plan. And so, and we have to do cost estimates, we have to do essentially a financial analysis like you would have to do for any comprehensive plan you do. We have to do the same thing. So you'll see a financial impact associated with that. So I would say, over this next several years, we'll know a lot more about that second ten years. And as projects move through their various development stages, that was the other part of your question, we know more about what that project is, the details, the site that, where it's going to go, all sorts of project level of detail gets better and better refined, and so the range of uncertainty associated with that project narrows. That's what happened with that mouth of the Duamish project, is we moved from a Class Ten cost estimate to Class Five, so a much higher level of detail, know more about that project. Unfortunately, the costs went up because we know more.
Right.
And also market conditions. So as that project continues to go, the cost may still shift, but the range of that shift will narrow over time. So we'll have more confidence in each of those projects as they incrementally move through their development stage.
Right. Well, I really do appreciate the fact that we are doing a twenty-year forecast now, even though, again, you know, the latter half of it might not be, you know, a high level of confidence that that might not shift, but at least it gives us something in order to start planning a little bit in the future as well. And it does sound like the communication mechanism is there to alert us as quickly as possible when some more data becomes available that could impact ratepayers. So I'm also just going to repeat some of the things that I said during that PIC meeting, just in terms of, you know, how concerned I am about the rate forecast and the fact that our residents are very much feeling squeezed right now already. Now, a lot of those things obviously are not your fault, but they're getting it from all sides, as we see throughout the region, throughout the country, you know, be it what they're paying for groceries, property taxes, gasoline prices. And I'm just really concerned that with these increases, just only going to, you know, for those on a fixed income, for those seniors, it's really going to have a significant impact on their bottom line and their ability to live in this city. While we're doing a lot of work to create environments, to create affordable housing across different options and ranges, you know, this still will have an impact of them being able to live in our city. So I just remain very, very concerned about that. So how can you help our, or maybe through us, educate our community and help them better understand why we're proposing these rates at this time? Because my fear is that, and I get it, they're going to get sticker shock by not understanding fully. And I don't know if we can do that with the bill inserts or other outreach, but I think this is going to be a lot smoother the more that we can, for, you know, for them to understand, for the residents to understand why this is happening now.
I think you're exactly right. Clear explanations with real facts, done simply, done in plain English are the best way to help people get up to speed. We've been working to increase our capability of doing that. I think we're making some progress. I think this is another subject where we were just talking in the car on the way over here about the need to do that and to provide cities... here about the need to do that and to provide cities like Bellevue and the other 33 communities that we serve through those partnerships with the information that you need to communicate to the residents, helping with that, owning that communication. We're happy to talk with, you know, community groups or others as, as you would need so that your residents, your local business owners have the information that we need. So we're going to build our capability. We're going to partner with you. We'll develop materials that you can either share or ask us to share. We're happy to do it.
Okay, thank you. And I am in favor of the staff, staff recommendation of the letter. I think that's, that's, that's great. I would especially kind of underline the, the guiding principles piece and, and that long-term forecast and some of my concerns there. I'd also love to see something in there just about the, the speed of information coming to the city, if we can underscore that so that we can address, you know, if rates continue to go even higher beyond what we, you know, our, our best guesses today, that we can, that we can adjust. So I, I'd like to see that further emphasized in the letter. And I'd also like us to consider, like to give my colleagues a perspective on this as well, if they're in favor, but I'd love for us to look at the mid buy to further increase the fund that we, the affordability fund that we have for those, again, those seniors or those in, in lower income bracket in our city, regardless if it's direct, indirect, emergency, that we look at potentially increasing that funding there because I expect that we're going to be hearing, and I'm so glad that it's streamlined now, it's going to be online, but I think we're going to get more requests from our residents than we have previously. So I'd like for us to take a look at maybe increasing that, that fund during, during the mid buy. Thank you.
Councilmember Noonhouse, just one more point on the summit. In an email earlier today from Executive Braddock, the utility summit was actually mentioned as one of her priorities during the rest of her term. And so we don't have any additional details, but we do look forward to working with WTD and the executive's office on further defining that summit.
Great, thank you.
And I'm just going to say with over 100 languages spoken in Bellevue, where that outreach is going to have to be very, very multilingual. Okay, let's see, next Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you Director Cameron, Lucy Ella and all of the utilities team for all of the work that goes to prepping this briefing. It's a massive effort and I appreciate how you have laid things for us. Thank you Councilman Lee for his effort. I also wanted to echo the concerns that all of my colleagues have raised around affordability. Costs are going up across everything and we need to address for sure the long-term infrastructure needs and growth, but we also should make sure that the pricing doesn't burden our people who live in Bellevue. I also wanted to emphasize young people. I know there were so many options in your slide for seniors, but we know 60% of the people like me are paycheck to paycheck or maybe younger than me, families, singles. I think we need to think about all of those folks that when all of the price at the same time goes up, they are going to be priced out at some point. I have similar question to my colleagues, but I think I'm going to go one layer details. Can you tell, so we saw the cost estimate for the mouth of Duamish project increase and that was just last year. Like last year, we saw the forecast for this year and then the, from, I don't remember number 1.9 now is like three point something, almost doubled. So my main question is what is the main reason for this jump? And specifically, I wanted to know, was there something based on new information that you didn't see last year and now during the last, from last year to this year, we found this information or was something that you guys missed in your forecast? Just wanted to be clear on that.
Sure, happy to answer that. I think it falls into two main categories. One is moving from, as I said, that class 10 cost estimate to the class five. You know much more about the project by moving from a planning level of detail to much more of a specific level of detail. And by knowing more, you, you discover more about what you really need to build that project and comply with the state law that we're, we're compelled to comply with. So part of that is just knowing more about what we're actually going to need to build. The other piece is market changes. That class 10 estimate was done some years ago and the market has shifted quite a lot. I'm sure you're seeing that with capital projects here in the city. We're certainly seeing that here with our projects too. And so costs have increased for labor, for materials, you know, commodities, steel, concrete, those kinds of things. All of that goes into that cost estimation process. I would also commend to you, and I think you probably had some Bellevue staff, we did a two-hour deep dive into that cost estimation process not too long ago. I believe it was recorded and we can make that available to the city here. If you, if you're really interested in diving deep into the subject, a lot of good questions were asked and answered during that time. So it goes into the different classes of the cost estimation process and then specific details associated with that project. So you can deconstruct that and, and nerd out on something like that if, if you're, if you're interested in it.
So, so both of those reasons that you mentioned, one, we know more.
We know more.
And from last year to this year and also increase in costs from last year forecast to this year forecast.
And let me add just a little nuance. We did not do a cost estimate last year. We did a cost estimate several years ago. That was the class 10 estimate, planning level estimate. We were using that cost estimate, it was the best available estimate we had at the time for last year's rate forecast. So what happened was between the information we were using for last year's rate forecast, which was that older cost estimate, and then we updated the cost estimate, that's now reflected in this year's. That happens all the time with capital projects as they move through the system. We update those cost estimates for every project whenever that new estimate is available and then that gets reflected in the, in the sewer rate forecast. So we, just to clarify, we didn't do a cost estimate for the project last year. We did that several years ago, but we did do a new estimate that's now reflected in the new forecast. And so that's the difference in time that's now reflected in those different.
So how old was the cost estimate that you used for last year?
I want to get you a really accurate answer, but I believe it was, I think at least four years old, but I'll get you a specific answer. I don't remember offhand.
And when you were giving the estimate for this year, last year, no one said the cost estimate for four years ago, including all of the cost increase that we know is not accurate anymore?
We do a normal escalation associated with that based on historical information. So we don't just leave it alone. We do a normal escalation and so that was reflected.
But the escalation was not enough when you did the rate.
Not enough to cover.
So, thank you. And sorry, I'm going into details because I, my whole point is from last year to this year, again, unknown uncertainties and some cost estimate difference, how can anyone be confident in any number that is five years from now?
Yeah.
Like, and when 1.9 million become 3.8 million in just one year and now we are looking five years from now, or 10 years, or sometimes 20 years from now. And again, I understand forecasting is very, very hard thing. And my, one of my recommendation is have you done any like best case scenario, worst case scenario for doing all of these uncertainties that you have? You mentioned there is a litigation on nutrient removal. So I think that can make your estimate go very, very high or maybe it goes lower than what you estimate. So is there any way that you can at least do some scenario basing that we know a better range of costs?
Yeah. Yeah, so answering both of the pieces of that question. One, we, we, we do our cost estimations consistent with the national best practices. So those class five and class, class 10, class five, class four, all reflect the, I'm going to get the acronym wrong, but it's American Cost Estimation Association. So in fact, we're participants in that process. We help inform and update those best practices along the way. So we are trying to follow those to a T so that we don't have faulty assumptions or sloppy work. We really work hard to make sure we follow those. And then how do you look ahead? Well, I think you're right that, that we have to look at those future numbers with, to some extent, a grain of salt. I don't want to charge more for the rate than I need to, so I'm trying to use, we're trying to use our best guess as to that cost as, as accurately as we can in that forecast. The closer we are to delivering that project, the more that range is narrow and then I have more confidence. So the projects that are going to be delivered in the next few years are, I know, I feel more confident with those costs than the ones that are out 10 years or 15 years. So the premise of your question is exactly right. I think we need to be as transparent and always honest and as explicit as we can be to show you what the range might be. And we need to all go into that as clear-eyed and clear-headed as, as we can. I don't know that's a very satisfying answer to your question because the nature of the work is built to have some imprecision and the precision increases over time.
That's exactly, I think, our disagreement. I think there needs to be a build of some, in some differences. But from last year to this year, 1.9 to 3.9, that's something that I cannot understand of some cushion or some uncertainty or some, I don't know, risk. Let me ask you one more question on the, Mayor, this is going to be my last question.
Okay.
And it's not about cost. It's about the feasibility of your capital project. And it brought up several times that we wanted to smooth the cost and maybe, what is your confidence on the deadline of 2034 for the mouth of Duamish CSO project? Again, we know there are a lot of factors go through the construction and capital project. As of right now, do you think that 2034 is a correct deadline?
I wish it were longer so that we would have some more time and that we could lower some of the year-to-year costs and that would help to lower some of that rate. We did not get that in our consent decree negotiations. The deadline is what that deadline is. That said, we are working very hard to make sure that we can meet that deadline with confidence. We started our project team even before the CD negotiations were even finalized because we were in the negotiation, we could see where it was going because we could see that it was a very limited time to get that project done. So we've been on this very, very specifically with a very, it's, it's, I've got a great team across WTD, but I'm especially proud of the team that's working on, on our CSO program. Really smart people, they're doing a great job. So my level of confidence is reasonably high that we can deliver on that deadline. I want to note though, that part of what I hear from the city here, what we've heard in other letters that we received, is a desire for us to continue to work with our regulators to see what additional flexibility we can provide. Are there some opportunities to shift project timing around? And so that is still on our to-do list to do exactly that. And that's with the State Department of Ecology, that's with the US EPA. And so we will be continuing to, to identify what those options might be and then seek to have those conversations with the, with the regulators. And if there is some opportunity there, we'll be the first to let you know and then to report to you on what that means for the capital program and therefore for the sewer rate. So if there is a way for us to moderate and smooth and make more predictable by working with those regulators, that's my job to do.
Thank you, appreciate it. Mayor, I'm done, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Subhan Duriya.
I think my colleague asked all the questions I want to ask, but thank you so much. I think that, I feel like on the 2027, there's like a double-digit 12.75 hike from seven is quite steep. So I really actually appreciate you, you know, your team just focus on having the transparency information to share. Cause I mean, that transparency is kind and that's clear to our community, especially I think with the vulnerable group and the residents, more information ahead is really helpful. I also want to like ask one question about the affordability, the utility cost. I really love how it's structured, have multi-level and I agree with Deputy Mayor that I think the focus on younger generation that has entry level job, that the first job, that'd be really helpful. And then even like a single mother like me with multiple kids, right? So I think the support from multi, I think, multi-aspect from the socioeconomic and household structure would be helpful. And then with the language support, that's, I would love to actually learn more about what this portal open and then, you know, when it's available and then the times how we can actually be proactive about giving to the community. So when they need help, they don't have to scrambling, trying to find information versus passing due any kind of bill in the future. One question, the question I had is, does this rate path account for what you believe that King County can reasonably deliver in your capital program?
We do. And we're trying to be as explicit and transparent about what goes into that capital program. These last few months, we've been answering a lot of questions from city staff and others within our service area on exactly that question. Again, our job is to open up the hood, you see what we see as best we can. It's a very large program. At any given time, we have 200 projects going, so there's a lot of detail for anybody who wants to, to look into it and we're working to make sure that that is transparent and shared.
Thank you. And then, oh, go ahead, sorry. Oh, that's, sorry. And then, you know, because there's this very significant increase in the capital program, what kind of strategy are you thinking about we can undertake to deliver this over the next 10 years?
Well, we're using a variety of different techniques. I mentioned some of what are now called collaborative delivery techniques. That's something that you need the approval of the state agency to do. And we've asked so far six, I believe it's six times and got approval, all six to do that. Those kinds of collaborative delivery techniques are really the best practice across the industry and they're especially good for larger practice, larger projects like we're building here. So, so that's one. We've also organized ourselves to do more of what we call programmatic delivery. It's a type of capital project delivery where we're co-locating our, our capital project staff at our plants so that they can collaborate with the operators at that plant. And we'll be more confident that the, what, what they deliver will actually work well for those operators, be able to do those design reforms earlier on in the process. And a lot of synergy happens when you have people working in concert together. So especially with, you know, the pandemic where people were sort of split apart a lot, we're trying to bring that back together and we think will yield some really good results. There's a few other things we're doing, but I'll keep my answer there.
Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Barghavah.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to keep it really brief. First of all, thank you for the presentation, complicated topic, you simplified it. It's easy to understand what the challenges are, so that's great. I, while it's been said a few different times already, I just want to reiterate the concern about rate increase and the impact on affordability, compelled to say that. And I also really appreciate your sort of approach to acknowledging the predictability has been not as great as it could be, so that's helpful. And I appreciate Deputy Mayor's comments on finding the balance there and being able to find better inputs or sensitivity analysis that will allow us to get better at that. Two things for me, the, one, more tactical question, in terms of spreading regulatory costs, because they're as high as they are in that bar chart. You talked about timeframes being restrictive and not having a chance to actually go beyond a certain deadline, but like, can you not move those capital costs to spread across out here to smoothen this out further? And if there's an opportunity, I would, you don't have to answer this, but I would really think that would be worth considering, given the sizable impact on that bar chart that we see from, from those specific costs. And then more or less tactical question, you talked about the vision for clean water, which is nice, and you talked about some of the priorities there. And you talked about the regional, I just want to understand how the vision and the regional wastewater assistance services plan, you know, come together in a, in a more strategic way.
Sure. I'll answer the second one first. The vision is that long-term, what do we want to, want to see for the region out to year 2100? That's the sort of distant shoreline. The plan is the first 30 years towards that 75-year vision. So the plan will be much more detailed and then our capital program, like was mentioned here, we do a six-year capital program, a two-year budget that has the most refined level of detail. So not unlike, I think, what the city does for your own projects here, we have to do here for the system as, as a whole. So I think you'll see that's how those things relate to each other. Here's where we want to go. The first 30 years is our path. The first 30 years is our path to get that much towards that goal. You've also mentioned, how do we smooth and extend those costs over time? We do, a lot of the program is financed with debt. So by definition, that is taking costs for a project that we're building today, like building a house today or buying a car today and spreading those costs over multiple years. That's the way it works here for that as well. We're looking to work with our lenders or regulators to extend those periods as long as possible. They have been traditionally at 30 years, we're now doing 35-year debt. And we're talking with them about even further periods of time. And I think it's actually not a bad idea because the nature, what we're building out there is infrastructure and equipment that lasts at least that long. This is a system that will be here in that year 2100. So we need to think about that kind of life cycle cost out that long. And then the debt structuring, we hope can help kind of match that as best we can. So that's one of the techniques that we do. We do also rate smoothing, so within given years, we try to avoid the spikes up and down for the rates. So that's why you see some of those rates a little bit more smooth. Would say last year's rate forecast was much more of a smooth-looking. It's still rising. This year has this big challenge in the near term. And we have not found a way to both pay for the projects that are needed by those deadlines and smooth sufficiently to reduce that down. But we're doing the best we can, but that's the nature of the finances for the near term.
Great, definitely an opportunity there. And the last thing I'd say is just generally supportive of the letter that's been drafted. I think it makes a ton of sense, I really appreciate the guiding principles to sort of set a framework of how the city's approaching this, thank you.
Okay, I'll try to be quick, appreciate my colleagues. I just can't accept this. I just, it really is a tough one. And as much as I love being a regional player, I just question like, is this helping us pay for our lake line replacement? I know you talked about the Mercer Island, but you know, I remember Bellevue over the last 20 years charging a little extra on all of our rate payers to save up money so that we could replace our lake lines. And so we're not going to need any relief from that, but we're going to help all the other regions pay for their replacements? I just...
Not the local systems, it's just the regional system that your county rates go towards. So the larger conveyance, so your lake line and other lines would feed into our larger conveyance. Same is true in Seattle. You're not paying for any of those smaller Seattle lines.
And the Duamish fits under that category as well, is that a regional system?
It is a regional, part of the regional system, yes.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry, I'm just cranky about this because I think about the reality of people being hit with these increasing, increasing, increasing bills. And it's just, I don't think it's something people can manage, to be honest with you. And so I'm very supportive of the letter. I would like to get every, all the cities together nationally to ask for a national response, some sort of infrastructure bill that would pay, you know, get jobs and pay for infrastructure so that the whole, because I know we're not the only region who's struggling with this.
Absolutely not.
So...
We're bigger than many, but we're not unusual, you're right.
Okay. And then the other thing is, I know there's, you showed the little black line that represented a WIFI alone.
Yes.
I'm surprised that that is so small. Can it be bigger?
Yes, I think it can. And we are absolutely delighted to pursue further WIFI loans as best we can. I look across my peers here and I, ours is a good size at a half a billion dollars, just under a half a billion dollars for a master loan agreement. There are others that are twice that size. And so I see us as a first step in the WIFI world. And we need to make sure that number one, the program stays in existence. And number two, that we take full advantage of it. So we are not shy about that. We are literally in touch with our WIFI colleagues at EPA almost daily, certainly weekly, to take full advantage of that program.
Okay, and then the direct relief of utility bills for seniors 62 or older and disabled, what do you have to do to qualify for that? You just be 62-plus or?
62-plus or for folks also who have a permanent disability. Right now, our eligibility threshold is 50% of average median income. And one of the things that we are looking to do is to make it easier to qualify. We know that our program is quite rich with a 70% discount. Once you do qualify, but our goal would be to bring back recommendations that will make it easier.
Okay, that's going to be interesting. Because then are you going to generate enough money from everybody to pay for the, to raise the money you need?
Right now, the good thing with our program right now is that we have roughly about $300,000 a year that is currently unusing the program. It's available for us to expand it, but certainly if it's beyond that, we would need to.
So that's where Councilmember Newenhouse's recommendation comes in.
Right.
Okay, well, I'd be, like to get more information on that. But I see, you know, consensus for sending this letter. I think we should, if you think that we should include anything about the WIFI or, please do. But I think the staff recommendations, I think we've all spoken to them and we agree with that. Is there anything that's missing, Councilmember Lee? Are you going to answer my question?
I think the RWQC is working its butt off to help address all the questions that we have raised. And I want to give credit to our staff as our role in the regional effort. Because this is a regional problem, being affect the Sochan Cities and all the water districts and the people who are depending on clean water and taking care of the wastewater and the whole environment for the region. So I think we, I want to compliment, you know, Allah and also people that are providing tremendous value to San Cities. Because where the city has the resources, has the great staff, and we have people who understand finances. So we work with MUPAC, we work with water districts, and we have the resources to help with the WTD staff, right? So I think we do provide valuable resources. And one example is that we talk about the rates. Either we pay for it or we have help from some other people. So one of the things going to federal government, like the mayor suggested. And the federal government has to come up with the money because the number we're talking about is not peanuts. Even the Duamish facility, it's $3 billion. That's just one small project that's insignificant in the whole asset that we need to build in order to take care of and serve adequately for the region. So we have to go to the federal government. And it has to include involve the region, all the cities, San Cities, Seattle, Bellevue. And we are going to provide the leadership, the tribes, and everybody who is concerned about clean water, about environment, about how to discharge water into clean water. So I believe that, I want to give credit to what we're doing. I think we have made lots of progress in the last few years with the coming of the director.
Thank you for all that, but you kind of cut me off, but then you added to what I was saying, so thank you. So I was gonna, I was asking if there was anything that was missing from the letter that the council felt like was missing. But you did mention kind of this push for a federal response, which is part of the WIFI, but it's also more of asking for a broader infrastructure package. Is that something that we can include in the letter?
Yes, yes, we can include that in the letter.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Lee. All right, thank you very much. We have a motion.
I move to direct staff to prepare a letter to the King County Council communicating the city's position concerning the proposed 2026 sewer rate, including sharing the council's thoughts on the long-term rate path and the importance of completing the RWSD update.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, City Manager, we have one more item on our...
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll invite the staff to come forward. We, this is an informational item. We wanted to bring our staff from the Office of Housing tonight to give you a little bit of an overview of what they're working on, how they have formed, how we've formed the office. And then also share a bit on some of the initiatives that they plan for this year to advance our housing objectives. And so I will invite Bianca Siegel, who is the Director of the Office of Housing, Nico Kihano, our Homelessness Outreach Coordinator, and Linda Abe, our Affordable Housing Planning Manager. And pass it off to Bianca to start the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Councilmembers. Thanks for having us here to talk about the new Office of Housing. There we go. So tonight, we are going to talk about the purpose of the team, our current structure and some of our partnerships, and then an overview of our 2025 work plan priorities. The, I'm going to start with just a little bit of background. So the impetus for creating the Office of Housing really came out of a lot of council guidance and then certainly the budget process last year. The Office of Housing is grounded in the 2024 strategic target area around high-quality built and natural environment. There's language in that that talks about the goal for residents to have access to a wide variety of housing types in Bellevue that meet all income needs and life stages. And then it also responds specifically to and directly to three of your 2024-26 council priorities, including updating the affordable housing strategy, looking at use of city-owned property for affordable housing, and of course, continuing our homelessness response work. So the Office of Housing is really focused on increasing access for everyone to safe and affordable housing. And we work with our partners to accelerate production and preservation of housing across the community and to support unhoused residents. We've organized that work into three main roles. So the first is we focus on strengthening partnerships and aligning our city teams in this work. We work on policy and programs and strategically use our city's resources to accelerate housing production and preservation, and then leading the city's homelessness response. The Office benefits from a really excellent staff team. I have the pleasure of working with our homelessness outreach program that's managed by Nico and the affordable housing team that's managed by Linda. Both those teams offer really great expertise on the affordable housing team. Linda, as well as one of our other staff, have strong background in development and housing financing that they bring to this work. We also have folks with really great expertise in community engagement and a really effective policy development and program management. And then, of course, the outreach team just does stellar work in engaging with our unhoused residents, housing navigation and response to encampments. We don't do any of that work alone. We partner really actively with staff across the organization who are engaged in a number of housing and homelessness-related initiatives in multiple departments as well as with, as well as with Arch, who is a key partner on the East Side and for Bellevue in particular. Okay, so shifting to our work plan priorities over this next year, these fall into three key areas. We're currently in our startup phase, and so we are carrying on some really important work that started and was underway as part of the Community Development Department and has moved under the umbrella of the Office of Housing and continuing the outreach program and then evaluating how we can best evolve the work that we do in organizational structures to deliver on our housing and community needs. So one of the initiatives this year, we are actually in the process right now of selecting a consultant to do organizational development, a steady, really focused effort to look at how we can align the organizational structures to best deliver on these housing goals, support housing stability, and also look at strategies for sustained funding to support affordable housing that'll result in recommendations for future phases of the Office of Housing. As we shift to talking about some of the housing work in particular, I just want to remind folks that a lot of the work that we're doing under the Office of Housing is really focused at helping the city stay on a path to achieve the really aggressive and important housing production targets that the council established last fall. We did a great job of meeting ahead of schedule the city's prior housing production targets. And now we're working towards an accelerated level of need and addressing that across the community. So one of the key ways that we're doing that is with the update of the Affordable Housing Strategy. That is underway currently. And it's a short-term or near-term action plan that'll really put us on a path towards achieving housing production goals as well as supportive services and other elements that help that housing and the people in the housing be successful. We've been busy doing a lot of community engagement for this work, including a film festival a couple of months ago, as well as a recent community event at Stephen Stone Elementary. You can see in the picture, we asked some of the attendees if they would do collages to illustrate their idea of home. Here's a very lovely one. Also at that event, we set up a housing resource fair because we had noticed that folks who were coming to our other outreach events were showing up with questions about how to access affordable housing. And so the staff team pulled together some of our community partners to provide that information directly to folks at the event and made some important connections for them there. I'm going to turn it over to Linda to talk about two of our other programs.
Thank you, Bianca. So the Affordable Housing Team is leading an update to the current multifamily tax exemption, the MFTE code. The MFTE program is an important tool for developers that incentivizes affordable rental housing and mixed-income buildings by reducing property taxes for a given period in exchange for providing affordable units. The purpose of the MFT update is to incorporate refinements to make the program more effective in expanding production of affordable housing in transit-oriented districts across the city. The update will have three areas of focus. One area of focus will explore opportunities to expand the scope and eligibility of the MFTE program as authorized by recent state legislation, including evaluating further the MFTE legislation passed during the 2025 state legislative session. Second area of focus will be to analyze options to layer MFTE requirements with recent mandatory affordability proposals, and we will look at other options as well. Lastly, we will review administrative changes to improve program effectiveness and management, such as revised reporting requirements and clarifying definitions. The MFT update will be guided by robust technical analysis as well as a targeted engagement plan to seek feedback and guidance from both affordable and market-rate developers and other stakeholders. Staff is beginning preliminary planning and analysis for the update. We plan to return to council for a study session this fall and hope to update, hope to adopt the updated MFT program by the end of the year. Another program that has been gaining traction this year is the city's C1 program, which supports faith-based property owners in developing affordable housing on their properties. Two affordable housing projects on church properties moving forward this year are with local nonprofit developer Imagine Housing. The first is the St. Andrews property, the rendering that shows, shows on the bottom there, shows that they will, they will be building a 100-unit family-sized affordable project right behind their existing church facility. The second is a St. Peter's United Methodist property in Crossroads, which could possibly provide an additional 100 units. So that project, that program has really been very effective. City-owned properties. Well, another recognized priority by council is to accelerate affordable housing opportunities on city-owned properties. Last year, staff worked with leadership to identify two city-owned sites for affordable housing development. One is the Half-Acre Wilberton TOD site on 120th. And the other is the One Acre Kelly TOD site located in the Bell Red Arts District. Both are prime transit-oriented locations and together could yield up to 400 new affordable apartments. In February, staff held an open house right here at City Hall to encourage developers to connect with each other and with local arts organizations, building interest and excitement around these projects and opportunities, we hope, for collaboration between the arts and developers. In March, the Office of Housing released requests for proposals for both sites. Proposals are being accepted until June 2nd with selection of development teams anticipated this summer. A solicitation for a second Bell Red parcel in partnership with Sound Transit is being led... led by the Economic Development Team and is expected to provide an estimated 400 units of market-rate housing.
Thanks, Linda. So, touching really quickly on funding, Housing Stability Program coordination falls under the umbrella of the Office of Housing in partnership with Human Services. And as you're aware, that program has invested around $30 million so far in housing production and preservation and supportive services. And just earlier tonight, on your consent calendar, you approved the funding contract for the Imani project out of the 2024 funding round for HSB. We'll continue to move that program forward. The 2025-2026 budget established a housing reserve fund, which combines our Housing Stability Program funds and new fees and other housing funding sources. And we work closely with the Finance and Asset Management in understanding those funds and moving them forward strategically. And then, of course, we're really focused on leveraging those resources and funding from partners like Amazon that have, you know, committed $100 million to furthering affordable housing production in Bellevue and present some really exciting opportunities. Okay. Last but certainly not least, Nico's gonna talk about the homelessness outreach program.
Thanks, Bianca. The homelessness outreach program staff are really glad to be part of the newly-formed Office of Housing. Every time that Linda and her team succeed in creating housing in our community, that helps make one of our goals, helping people experiencing homelessness in the city of Bellevue, get indoors, much easier for us. So, we're glad to be a part of this team. In brief, my team works with folks to provide direct outreach to people experiencing homelessness. Since the start of 2025, we've worked with 259 different people experiencing homelessness in the city of Bellevue. One of the ways that we help is through housing navigation. Since the start of 2025, we've helped 29 people experiencing homelessness find their own housing. Another thing that we do and spend a lot of our time on is facilitating the city's response to encampments on public property. That includes both directly interacting with people in encampments and offering them assistance and access to resources, but also initiating the city's enforcement of the ordinance prohibiting camping on public property. The goal there is to come up with as healthy a response as possible, both for the people living in that encampment, but also for the residents and surrounding community. In addition to that work, we've facilitated the Safe Parking Program in collaboration with For Tomorrow. You actually just extended the contract for the Safe Parking Pilot with For Tomorrow on consent earlier today. Since the launch of that program in May 2025, we've housed 33 families. That's over 100 parents and children who are now indoors thanks to that program. We're continuing to work on identifying a potential long-term location for that program as we look towards the program's future. In addition to that work, you can expect to see a publicly-available data dashboard that reflects some of the work that my team does and some of the data we collect on homelessness. That's been a request from many community members, and we're excited to be able to present that soon. We'll continue to work with partners in the region with regard to enhancing our response for emergency severe weather for folks experiencing homelessness. And finally, we'll work on broadly partnering with members of the community, our local and regional, partners to better support folks experiencing homelessness, especially our fellow East Side cities and nonprofits that work with folks experiencing homelessness. In brief, then, I would say that there are a lot of challenges upcoming. There's a lot of exciting work that's happening as well, and overall, we have a lot of work still to do. So, with that in mind, I'll turn it back to Bianca, who will talk about our next steps for the Office of Housing.
Thanks, Nico. Okay, so, some things you can expect to see in short order. Over the next few months, we're gonna be scheduling briefings with each of you regarding the Affordable Housing Strategy update to talk in more detail about how that work is going. We'll be working on the MFT-E code update. You might start to see some stakeholder engagement around that, and we'll be conducting analysis, technical analysis for that program coming back to you in the fall. Over the summer, we'll be evaluating proposals for the city-owned sites and the development teams that submit proposals for those, and that will also be coming back to you. And then, we anticipate you might see on your consent calendars over the next few months some agreements with partners related to severe weather services and possibly some outreach data collaborations with adjacent cities. So, lots of exciting work going on and really continuing to move this program forward. I know it's late. Thank you for letting us share this with you. It's really, it is really exciting and meaningful work. I think you heard that from the team, and I just want you to know that we all really take this work very seriously and look forward to improving access to housing across the community. And we are available for questions.
Okay, thank you very much. So, we have about 20 minutes left. We have seven council members who all want to speak, so I'm gonna ask everybody to limit it to three minutes, if they can. So, let's start with you, Councilmember Bargava.
I may not use the full three minutes, but this is great. Really, congratulations on the establishment. This is a fantastic, you know, initiative. I really appreciate all the work. I'm really appreciative of the creativity with which you're approaching this program. Love to learn more as we evolve the MFT. I think there's an opportunity there that might accelerate, and I think you talked about acceleration as one of your core targets, which I think is really good to see. I also really appreciate sort of the C1 program and the fast movement there and the innovation of using citywide properties and identifying more and more of these. Overall, really appreciative that you're, the great work you're doing. Love to find ways to help and support what you're doing in any way I can. On the homelessness, I really appreciate the call-outs and the introduction. I didn't know all of the work that you're already doing. I think plus one to everything you're doing, which is great. Are there any strategies for homelessness prevention that you're thinking of that might prevent people finding themselves in those situations? And I don't know what your thoughts are there. That would be my only question.
Yeah, and Bianca, you may wanna say more, but my team focuses largely on responding to folk, the homelessness and to supporting folks experiencing homelessness, but our Human Services Department does quite a lot of work in the prevention area, as do a number of other departments.
Yep. Well, Zed, I was also gonna call out Human Services. A lot of the Human Services contracts provide supports for community members that help to avoid people falling into homelessness. Also, the city's Housing Accord program is looking at supporting folks in tenant landlord relationships to deal with that as well. So, there's a number of angles at which the city tries to approach that, but certainly a complex issue.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Sumadwarya.
Mine's gonna be shorter. I'm gonna give you the gift of time. Thank you so much for having this presentation. I'm just looking forward to the briefing and updates, and just please let us know how can we support.
Councilmember Newenhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate the update. Couple of quick questions, and I'll just be direct. So, is the Office of Housing, my understanding, that are basically gonna be the regulators of all housing in the city, or is it really just a direct replacement of Arch?
I would say neither.
Okay.
So, we're not directly regulating all housing in the city, but we are a point of coordination for the housing work that's being done. Obviously, a lot of code and policy work being done in Development Services, long-range planning work with the comp plan being done in community development, some specific housing programs and housing issues being addressed under the current format of the Office of Housing. It's not a replacement for Arch, but I think rather a recognition. We continue to partner very actively with Arch and rely on them, yeah. I think it's also recognition that we have perhaps a greater need to accelerate some of this work in Bellevue and want to provide the additional resources and staff expertise to do that while we continue to work with Arch.
Okay, okay, great. Probably "replacement" is not probably the right word to describe that, but you understand what I meant.
Yeah.
Then, it's also good, because the presentation was heavily focused on affordable housing and homelessness, which is right and is priority for this council and for this city, and rightly so. But there was very little about market-rate housing here. So, I'm curious if it's also a goal of the Office of Housing to maintain a good relationship with the development community, have, you know, a friendly environment to encourage more supply in our city. What are we doing on that end? Because, quite frankly, there wasn't really much said about that, and that's part of this equation, right? We want to create as much more inventory of housing in our community as we can. So, can you speak to that a little bit?
Absolutely. Thank you for that question. I should have emphasized that more. A lot of the work, as you saw, that's currently going on in Office of Housing, is focused on the affordable housing piece.
Right.
But we're looking at the full spectrum of housing, market-rate and affordable. We do have really active relationships with members of the development community and will continue to build on those.
Great.
Things like the MFT-E program
Yep.
are very much in partnership with market-rate developers. And yes, increasing all housing in the city is also very much a goal.
So, will you be leading the charge in terms of relationship with the development community, and where does Development Services then fit in to that? Because there's some overlapping there, right?
That's a good question. I'll hear. This is a good conversation for when we start redoing our affordable housing strategy, that actually encouraging market rate is also part of that strategy. Is that a conversation we can have?
Sure, yeah. I mean, the affordable housing strategy is focused on affordable housing, but certainly not to the exclusion of market rate. So, yes, absolutely, we can talk about that.
I mean, increasing more market-rate housing is going to help with affordable housing as well. It's not the main strategy, but it is a strategy. So, is that?
Well, that's good. I just still would like to understand how it's gonna be structured with Development Services.
Yep. Development Services has really specific legally required, in many cases, areas of responsibility with respect to code and permitting, and we're not proposing to change any of that. It's really just working in partnership with them so that they're able to do that work
Okay.
you know, with the increasing effectiveness that they have been, and we'll come alongside.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
I do still think that this should be part of our strategy conversation, and we can look at, maybe we do want to give direction in that with codes. I mean, we don't know. Let's have it, let's talk about it, though.
I agree.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Good to see all of you. Very pleased to see that the update to the MFT-E program is a high priority, and we'll have it completed by the end of the year. Very pleased also to see that our C1 program has two projects in the pipeline, and thrilled that one of the projects is in my neighborhood. Also appreciate the Office of Housing's leadership in advancing the projects planned for city-owned properties in Bell Red and Wilburton. Appreciate the care and attention for our Safe Parking Program, and I'm thrilled that we've extended the contract with For Tomorrow to continue that work as we look for a permanent home for our Safe Parking Program. Just a couple of quick questions for you. You talked about engaging a consultant to do some organizational work, and I'm just wondering, are we bringing stakeholders into that? Do you know kind of, you know, a little bit of what that process is, some community-based organizations who might be involved in that?
Yep. We have a wealth of feedback from a whole range of stakeholders because of all of the other work that's ongoing, and we'll definitely include that in the process. A lot of the analysis is focused on sort of internal spans of control, working relationships and processes. So, to the extent that it's helpful to include outside stakeholders in that, we are certainly up into that.
Great. I think that would be really helpful to do that. So, keep up the great work. Look forward to hearing future updates, and please let me know how I can support your efforts. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I love the Safe Parking Program, so keep it up. But I do have some questions about the Office of Housing as being expressed. I believe that if we, it's a housing office, it need to address all housing. You emphasize you develop policies by working with consultants. I think this is where clarity need to be made. Clarity means, we heard earlier when the public came to talk to us, public communication, you know, the feedback is that many people don't really know clearly what housing we're talking about, because there's so many facets of it. Okay, we have affordable, market-rate, middle housing, whatnot, you know, it's just, it's all housing. But your office housing sounds like you are really the housing. So, I think you need to clearly define what is your responsibility, number one. And I hope that if it's the name of the housing, you should include all that, unless you change your name to define what sector you want to be specializing. But if it's overall, and since you are making policies, working consultant, I think you need to be reaching out to the community also, and also, obviously, to our commission and our council, making sure that we work together to formulate the policies. Because by the time if you work consultant, you got policy formed, you come back to us, we have to start from scratch. It's just one of the policy. We have to understand it and whether we agree or not. Then, we have to work with the public to find out if that is what we intended to be doing. So, I think it needs to be more clarity. But that's why I have to add. So, we'll be looking, I'll be happy, looking forward to you getting our input. Maybe you can come back and say, this is what we are doing, this is our responsibility, and how we're gonna formulate the policy together with us and with the community. Thanks.
So, to clarify, for Councilmember Lee, how often are we gonna have updates from this department?
We have established a regular cadence for Office of Housing updates. You do receive regular updates on implementation of the Affordable Housing Strategy, which is probably a good opportunity to take a broad look at how these programs are going. But we can look at bringing you some regular updates on the office as well.
I think there's definitely an interest for that. Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Bianca, Linda, Nico, thank you so much, and the whole team for launching the Office of Housing, this integration of housing and homelessness. I think that's a great idea. All of the work that you did to, to, 30 seconds, to set the whole thing and launch the whole thing, I really appreciate. The potential is a lot, so hopefully we get there. Two quick questions. One is, do we have any metrics that we are tracking the progress of this Office of Housing? Again, you don't need to answer. I would love to see that the next time you come, how we are progressing in equity, displacement prevention, long-term housing, and all of those beautiful metrics that we can have. The other thing is, is the scope of Office of Housing is to address some of the innovation that we can have, both in construction and in our financing, like, for example, modular or prefabricated housing in our own parcels, maybe, as something that encourage maybe cheaper or faster construction, or maybe some of these funding that we have, when we rent to own models or cohousing, or some of these different financing model, is also this is the scope of the Office of Housing in, at some point in the future. So, we can come back with later for sake of time, but those are my two questions.
Okay. So, thank you. This is a great presentation. I'm really excited about this. I want to just throw out two thoughts so you could write it down, so we don't forget, I won't forget, and bring it back when we start talking about our strategy again. One is, I don't know if ChatGPT is correct, but if I do the math from the data I get from that, it looks like 7% of the housing in Bellevue is vacant. And that seems really high, so I don't know if I believe it. But I do know that there are quite a few vacant residences. So, I'm wondering if that's something that we can look at, because I know other cities have addressed that. So, I would like that to be something we examine in the strategy, when we think about the strategy. The other one is, I love that we're helping develop C1 properties. I want to expedite it. It shouldn't take five years for them to develop. And so, if we can find ways to fast-track that development for the properties that fit the description, I'd be really interested in contemplating that as well. But thank you very much. I think no more questions? All right. With that, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.